Good evening. I'd like to call the Windsor Board of Education meeting Tuesday, May 20th, 2025 to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. I'm going to call on Secretary Lockhart to read a statement.
Good evening. As Secretary of the Windsor Board of Education, I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and our television viewers. The Board Superintendent and I are pleased that you have joined us to celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of Windsor Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. Our mission is to develop the genius in every child and create lifelong learners. As the Windsor Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. Meetings of the Board are open to the public. It is a time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, the Board Chair may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of the school system and thank you for your interest in Windsor Public Schools.
Thank you very much, Secretary Lockhart. Our next order of business are some recognitions from the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. They're the CAPE Student Leadership Awards. In fact, President of CAPE happens to be here on the dais and actually is one of the signatories of these as well. So at this point, I'll turn this over to Dr. Hill to recognize his staff.
Thank you, Mr. President. For our audience to know, each year, the Windsor Board of Education recognizes two outstanding students from both Windsor High School and Sage Park Middle School to receive the Connecticut Association Boards of Education Student Leadership Award. This award was developed to give local Boards of Education a chance to reward student potential. Students who are selected exhibit exemplary leadership qualities as defined by a list of criteria developed by the CAPE Board of Directors. First, I'm going to invite Principal Leanna Jorgensen for Sage Park Middle School so that she can speak on her award winners.
Good evening, everyone. Usually I'm second, but that's okay. How am I going first today? So tonight, it is with great honor that I present to you two amazing young ladies. My mom, or mama, Portia, always had a saying, and so after thinking about these two young ladies, it certainly did come to mind, that steel sharpens steel. And so the two ladies I'm going to introduce to you tonight, quite a few coincidences. They just happen to be best friends. They were born on the same exact date, and they were selected by two houses of teachers unknowing that the other one was being selected. And so, you know, when you are known by the company you keep, and steel sharpens steel, I think those two young ladies are fated to be together, and they are definitely in good company. All right, so tonight, my first student, it gives me great pleasure to present the Connecticut Association Boards of Education Student Leadership Award to Mackenzie Blair. Come on, Mackenzie, come sit with me. So Mackenzie has earned this distinction through her outstanding academic performance, strong leadership qualities, and commitment to being a positive role model for her peers. From the start of her middle school journey, Mackenzie set ambitious academic goals for herself. She aspired to maintain honors every marking period, and through hard work and determination, she achieved exactly that. Among her proudest accomplishments was being inducted into the National Junior and Society, an achievement that brought her immense pride and reinforced the importance of scholarship and leadership. Mackenzie is also a natural leader who contributes meaningfully to our school community. She's an active member of the Sage Park Leadership Club, where she participates in school initiatives and leads by example. Her leadership extends into the classroom as well. Mrs. Wallace, so we talked to quite a few teachers, I'm gonna take you back through her journey. Her sixth grade teacher says Mackenzie was an outstanding student. She helped others and put a lot of thought and effort into her work, and she was extremely kind to all. Mackenzie also brings her talents to the arts and athletics. She has been a competitive cheerleader for five years, participating in an 095 organization, where she has learned the value of teamwork, perseverance, and trust. These experiences have shaped her into a dedicated and confident student athlete. She is also a member of the Sage Park Drill Team, where her discipline and spirit stood out. In addition to athletics, Mackenzie has a creative side. Mrs. Miettenen, her art teacher remarked that Mackenzie is a positive and conscientious student and very capable artist. She is willing to take risks and often chooses art tasks that are more difficult than her peers. She is not afraid of a challenge and rises to meet it. Whether she's working on a complex art project or tackling academic challenges, Mackenzie approaches each opportunity with grit and enthusiasm. Mackenzie's academic strength shines across all subjects areas. Ms. Ayala, her Spanish teacher, I'm so proud of Mackenzie. She has taken the challenge of learning a new language as a pro. She's an exemplary student, she's smart, organized, respectful, and kind. I am lucky to have her as a student. That commitment to excellence is echoed, again, I went back to sixth grade, Mr. Phi, who stated, "Mackenzie was always a student who cared about her work and wasn't satisfied until she mastered the content. She always pushed herself and others around her to do their best." When asked what leadership means to her, Mackenzie responded, "Leadership means being someone others can look up to. It's about setting a good example, staying true to your values, and helping others succeed alongside you. A leader does not or doesn't just give directions, they listen, they support their team, and work hard even when no one is watching. Leadership is about being kind, responsible, and stepping up when it counts." Mackenzie Blair exemplifies what it means to lead with integrity, compassion, and purpose. She's made a lasting impact on our school community, and we are honored to recognize her with the CAPE Award for this school year. Congratulations. All right, it is my pleasure again to present the Connecticut Boards of Education Student So Macy has been a standout student at Sage Park Middle School, consistently earning high honors each quarter from sixth grade to eighth grade, maintaining an impressive A to B average. Her personal goal is to continue this academic excellence into high school, and there's no doubt she'll achieve it. Watch out, Mr. Parker. As an educator who has witnessed her academic journey from elementary through middle school, Mrs. Bowman shared, "I was lucky enough to have Macy two years in a row, once in fifth grade at JFK and again in sixth grade at Sage Park. Macy is a very talented writer. Her writing stands out and still stands out as one of the best I've seen in all of my years. It was an honor to be her teacher, not once, but twice. Macy's all and so a talented musician, participating in both concert band and jazz band, where she plays the clarinet. She brings the same passion and determination to her music as she does to her academics." Mr. Pirros noted, "Macy Curtis has never shied away from a challenge in instrumental music. Whether it's taking an improvisational solo in jazz band or playing a difficult clarinet, she tackles it with persistence and a positive attitude. In addition, she has been playing the piano for about six years, inspired by her father, and credits both instruments with teaching her patience, discipline, and the value of consistent effort, skills that have shaped her academically and personally." Beyond the academics and music, Macy is a member of the National Junior and Society, where she has further developed her sense of scholarship and service. She shares that NJHS has helped her to build stronger peer connections and deepen her involvement in the community. Mrs. Freeman, we went back in time, her sixth grade science teacher, reflected on her time with Macy. Macy is always about bringing the sunshine into the classroom. She leads with kindness, compassion, and a willingness to help others. Her quiet leadership style makes others comfortable taking academic risks. She is such a great peer model. Macy also participates in various extracurricular activities, including art club, cooking club, where she has developed both the creative and practical life skills. Outside of school, she plays volleyball, which has taught her teamwork, perseverance, and sportsmanship. Mrs. Haynes, her eighth grade teacher, says Macy's presence, she's a hard worker, a caring student, always willing to help a classmate with joyful enthusiasm. She makes the classroom environment so much better every single day by her being there. In her free time, Macy enjoys reading, especially mystery and realistic fiction, crocheting, and a whole sorts of other stuff. Ms. Ayala perfectly captured Macy's essence by saying, "My sweet Macy, not only a great student academically, but also kind, friendly, respectful, pushes herself to be the best version of herself every day and others." When asked Macy about what leadership means to her, she said, "Leadership means not caring what others are doing and always striving to do the right thing. It means guiding others to do the right thing in situations, motivating not just yourself but your team too. Leadership also means being responsible, kind, and willing to step up when needed. It's not just about being in charge, but about working as a team and making sure everyone's voice is heard. Macy Curtis embodies all the qualities we hope to nurture in our students, integrity and compassion. It is with pride I recommend Macy for this prize."
Thank you, and congratulations again to our Sage Park Award winners. At this time, I will call Dr. Parker, Principal of Windsor High School, to come speak on the award winners from Windsor High.
Good evening, everyone. First, a special shout out and a well done to our Sage Park representatives. So you're on our radar for greatness. See you soon. And now I get the privilege of introducing two Windsor High School, what I call two portraits of a graduate. First, I'd like to call up Ms. Amanda Ina. Amanda is a driven and accomplished senior at Windsor High School. Amanda is known for her strong service orientation, effective communication, athleticism, instruction, and time management skills. Her passion for helping others shines through both academically and in her community involvement. Amanda has held a coaching position with the Husky Volleyball Club, where she worked with children in grades K through six to develop their volleyball skills through drills and team play. Amanda also actively volunteers at the Connecticut Cat Connection, caring for animals and assisting with organizational needs and event promotion. Amanda has been deeply involved in school extracurriculars throughout her high school career. She's a dedicated member of the Windsor High School volleyball team, where she served as a co-captain and played multiple defensive roles, helping her lead the team to the state tournament in 2023. She also plays on the tennis team, earning the title of Most Improved Player. In the Most Improved Player in the 2023, contributing to her team's qualification for the CIAC State Tournament. In addition, Amanda plays flute for the Windsor High School Marching Band and has taken leadership roles during rehearsals and performances. She has also served her class as an active member of the Class of 2025 Student Organization and previously volunteered as a tutor at Paquannick Elementary School. Amanda's academic excellence has been recognized through numerous honors, including induction into the National Honor Society and the Rho Kappa Social Studies Honor Society. She is a recipient of the J.S. Lim Scholarship Award for Excellence in Science, the prestigious Harvard Book Award, and has earned the title of AP Scholar with honors for her outstanding performance on multiple AP exams. With a blend of academic rigor, leadership, and a heart for service, Amanda is poised to thrive in her future endeavors at Boston University and beyond. This fall, she will begin her undergraduate studies, majoring in biology with a specialization in behavioral biology, on the pre-veterinarian track. Her leadership and academic prowess are evident, and I look forward to her future success. Oh, and somewhere in there, she found time to be recognized as co-valedictorian for the Class of 2025. Dr. Hill and members of the Board, I present to you Amanda Ina. Okay, our next recipient. This young man is no stranger to this Board of Education. As you may remember, Victor Montilla was one of your Board of Ed representatives during Semester One of this school year. In that role, he was known for his very thorough reporting on everything happening in the Windsor High School community. Victor is a high-achieving senior who has consistently challenged himself by taking numerous AP and early college courses during his time at Windsor High School, with a final class rank of four, by the slimmest of margins. Victor plans to attend, where are you going?
Boston University.
So in the fall, he's going to major in cell biology, molecular biology, and genetics as a warrior in the fight to defeat childhood cancer. Victor has been the recipient of the Trinity Club of Hartford Book Award, the Rochester Boston Law honorary science award, and is an AP Scholar with distinction. Along with being an excellent student, Victor is busy with his extracurricular activities, which contribute to his well-roundedness. He's an active member and president of the Northwest Connecticut Cyber Leos Club, a service organization where he leads fundraising efforts aiding vision screening, international crisis support, monetary support for the Fidelco Guide Dogs Association, and is working internationally, and I love this one, to bring a human library to Windsor. That's your homework for tonight, for those that don't know what the human library is. Awesome concept. He is honored to be one of the three nominees for the Leo of the Year Award in Connecticut, reflecting his commitment to leadership and community service. Victor is an active member of the Technology Student Association, also known as TSA, where he served as a state-level sergeant-at-arms, parliamentarian, and is currently the state vice president, where he has launched a statewide fundraising campaign across all member schools in the support of a national service project with the American Cancer Society. He is interned with state representative and former Windsor Board of Ed president Jane Garibay, and is a historical records transcriber for the Windsor Historical Society. At Windsor High School, Victor is a student advocate and mentor for the Fresh Start Program and Connections Leadership Program. He is a member of the National Honor Society and Rho Kappa Honor Society and a student representative on our very own School Governance Council. Victor has a pulse in many aspects of our school and community and has demonstrated the characteristics of an amazing leader, and I anticipate we will hear big things from Victor in the years to come.
Thank you, and again, congratulations to our award recipients. This is just another example of the greatness of Windsor, and I can't say it was missed on me just seeing the diversity and ethnicities that we have in our town and just the brilliance that you young people bring to the town. Continue doing great things and making us proud.
I'm gonna let the Board members chime in on this as well. It's always wonderful when we see great examples of what's going on in our school, so. Mr. Lockhart, first?
Sir, it would be lost upon me if, as President of CAPE, on behalf of the Board of Directors, there's another Board of Director in the room with me as well, to offer congratulations to these four students on behalf of the entire CAPE organization and the over 1,400 Board of Education members across the state. Well done. These are honors that we bestow on all school districts, whether they are a member district of CAPE or not. We thrive on supporting Board of Education members and supporting student achievement. So we're not going to say good luck to you, we're going to say do well, because Windsor has prepared you.
Ms. Taylor?
I am just over the moon because I know all four of you personally, and I am just a proud mama up here. You're all, this is well deserved, and I just love when they run down the accolades because you've done a lot of things that grown people have not been able to do in a lifetime. So keep doing what you're doing. I'm so excited that we have doctors coming our way, veterinarians coming our way, and musicians coming our way. The world needs you, keep doing what you're doing. I'm very, very proud of you.
On behalf of the entire Board, it's wonderful to see such leadership, to see the well-roundedness of these students, all the, I don't know how you do all the things that you're able to do, especially in a caring way for your other fellow students as well as the Windsor community and beyond. And Victor, if you need some help, Ms. Ina will be nearby if you need help with your projects for next year, and we're hoping, obviously, that the Sage Park students become Dr. Parker's students next year as well. So thank you to all the recipients. The next order of business is Item 2B, the presentation of CAPE Bonnie B. Carney Award of Excellence for Educational Communications for the Windsor Public School Staff Wellness Committee, and we have the CAPE II Area Director, Lisa Simone, here to present that award. And CAPE relies on a lot of volunteers, and they've divided geographically the area. We are in Area II, and Lisa is a CAPE II Director. Lisa?
Thank you. And just wow when it comes to Windsor. Incredible, incredible work. As an educator and listening to the kids and your speeches, it's incredible the children that you're raising in Bloomfield. As an educator and listening to the kids and your speeches, it's incredible the children that you're raising in Bloomfield. Okay, so I'm gonna go... I live next door.
Leonard, remove that woman.
Cut that out.
You are okay.
Why, thank you, thank you. Okay, so I am actually here... Good evening, Superintendent Hill. I'm here on behalf of Cave Board of Ed members. My name is Lisa Simone. As I said, I'm an educator as well, and it was just so impressive to hear about your students and just wow, again. I'm here as the Area II co-director of Cave to recognize the efforts of the Windsor Public Schools and to present you with this award. In order to receive a Bonnie B. Carney Award of Excellence for Educational Communications, entries must meet all the following criteria. First is the general criteria which includes clarity of message, image, and consistency. Second, the specific guidelines of readability, editing, graphics, type, format, presentation, design, and value of the expenditure. I'm very happy to present Windsor Public Schools with the Award for Excellence for Educational Communication IV Newsletter, Windsor Public Schools Staff Wellness Newsletter, to be specific. Cave has been honoring school districts with the Award of Excellence for Educational Communications since 1975. In 2016, the award was renamed in honor of longtime Cave staff member Bonnie B. Carney in recognition of her 47 years of dedication to education focused on communications. With these awards, Cave's goal is to identify and honor the hard-working people in school districts for their continuing effort to communicate effectively.
So, we're gonna give the audience a description of the wellness program. So, we have Ms. Alexis Kruger. She's going to explain it to you.
Hello. Not often I'm on this table. So, the wellness, the staff wellness newsletter is just a part of the wellness committee for Windsor Public Schools staff. In the wellness newsletter specifically, I handle editing as well as formatting and everyone who brings their pieces together. We try to encompass the whole body of the staff and their wellness. Certain aspects that we highlight are local events that are happening in our community because we want to allow staff to see what's around them, see what's at home. So, we highlight local events, we highlight gyms that are nearby because it's not just about physicality and the physical wellness. We also try to get staff outdoors. So, we... There are certain pages to the wellness newsletter that focus on outdoor activities as well as events that are happening in town or in their surrounding towns. So, we don't just focus on Windsor, but we have staff coming from all parts of the state. So, we just try to highlight everything that goes on in the state of Connecticut.
Well, thank you very much. Are there any questions that board members have? Mr. Lockhart, or Secretary Lockhart, or President Lockhart, or President-elect Lockhart, depending on which organization?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very humbled as Cave president. Many may not know that the Cave presidency is not... It's something that's, depending on where you are in the leadership cycle, and during the last cycle, it was Waterbury, Bloomfield, Mottville. And so, when presidents are in office, there's a great sense of pride when they represent their district in the highest office in the land. So, when you have your district setting the tone, setting the standard... As president, I'm not allowed to participate in any of these decisions. A lot of these decisions are not brought before me, they're brought before the first vice president if it's something to do with my respective district, just to keep the process fair. And to see Windsor continue to excel, to see Dr. Hill continuously work through Sally Brown and the staff, to continuously to submit the good works that we are doing in Windsor Public Schools. I've always asked that we tell our story. I've always asked every school district in the state of Connecticut to tell your story and not let the public or negative naysayers tell your story. You need to tell the story for your staff and for your children. And I'm asking every district within the state of Connecticut to continue to be bold and tell the story for your kids, support your staff, and to continue to fight the good fight. So, to have, as president, have these many awards bestowed upon Windsor during my presidency, it's very humbling, it's numbing, but I'm here to tell you, once I step away from it in November, it will not stop. There's a lot more beautiful things that are coming out of Windsor, and we're gonna continue to set the bar high, and we're gonna continue to compete with all the other districts that we feel that we should be competing with and actually making sure our children and our staff are being recognized. So, Dr. Hill, thank you very much for everything that you do, and thank you for your staff for actually documenting the good work that we actually do in Windsor Public Schools in spite of what's being said about Windsor Public Schools.
Mr. Panos?
Yes, I wonder if you could tell us about something in the organization. Are all the staff members actively part of this? Is this a formal group, or is this just a newsletter? Or could you tell us a little bit more?
A little bit about the wellness committee itself?
Wellness committee itself.
Certainly. So, the wellness committee started in the '23-'24 school year. It initially started through the benefits office. Danielle Bachelder is the supervisor of the wellness committee, and the wellness newsletter, as I mentioned, is just an aspect of it. But through that, we have done programs that are for the entire district staff. Part of it was the November professional development that took place this past November where we hosted a wellness fair for our staff, where we had vendors come in and just provide assistance and to answer any questions for our staff members.
But, so it just shows what is available locally?
Yes, what is available to our staff.
For the whole range of things, emotional or, you know, physical? Is that the idea?
I mean, I just... So, the wellness committee wellness newsletter originated, like Lexi said, last school year. The benefits coordinator at that time, Lisette Latour, was very eager and like really loved this type of work within the benefits department. So, she spearheaded it to get it going. We've been trying to get it going in Windsor for many years, and Anthem actually provides us up to $10,000 a year in what they call wellness funds. So, we have money to purchase, you know, things such as, you know, raffle prizes or... Mainly, we use the money for raffle prizes, yeah, to get more of our staff to fill out the surveys, to come to a cooking class or come to a yoga class, for example. We, you know, we had all these. So, it would entice them to come, learn about it, and then we were able to raffle off prizes. And like Lexi said, we donated some of those monies to our November PD, and we were able to offer healthy initiatives for our staff and others to come and just see different things, just, you know, what else is out there. And also, what's in the newsletter is we ask who is, you know, what are you reading? You know, we put books on there. What are you cooking? There's always different recipes that we've added to the newsletter, but always health-conscious of surrounding health mentally and physically. So, moving forward, the direction, once this got kicked off, and now it's in about a year and a half, two years now, I've reached out to the district as a whole to say, teachers, paras, custodians, are you interested in joining this committee? And I got a lot of responses back that they now want to join this committee now that it got started. So, moving forward, we're gonna be opening it up to more than just central office people being on the committee.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Wallaston?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it is pretty cool, and it's interesting to me. It kind of reads like a coupon book, which I think is also pretty cool. So, yeah, this is really amazing and great work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I thought you were gonna ask when is it gonna be open to board members, but I didn't. Anyone else? Lexi, thanks so much. Dr. Hill, thank you, and Ms. Bachelder. Next item on the agenda, Item 2C, is a presentation on the Windsor High School hydroponics, and I think that's being kicked off by Dr. Feynman. And just a little, a little quick sidebar note here. Mr. Panos, Mr. Lockhart and I had the opportunity after the Windsor High School Teacher Appreciation Breakfast to go up and see the hydroponics lab, which was great.
Mr. President, can I make a special notation before?
Yes.
Dr. Feynman, thank you. So, I just wanna say, I wanna congratulate Dr. Feynman. She recently received her PhD from the University of Kentucky. She rockin' the socks too, but she is formerly a wildcat, and what I wanna say is that, again, I encourage my leaders to just, you know, be daring and go out and do great things. And Bonnie said a few years back, wait a minute, everybody's getting their doctorates. I'm getting me a doctorate too. She did her thing, and, you know, I know it's not easy to work on a doctorate degree while you're working full-time. And Mom, and, you know, she did it. And, you know, I don't think there was a letdown in her work. She continued to have ideas for Windsor, continued to push, you know, folks forward. So, I'm very proud of her. And again, this is just, for me, I'm biased, always biased about Windsor, right? And very defensive of Windsor, from the kids first and then my adults, my staff. She's doing her thing, she's making Windsor look good. I'll let her talk at another date. You know, she wrote a dissertation of some distinction, and she didn't just write a piece of paper. Folks are reading it, and it's a powerful piece. So, congratulations, Bonnie, I'm proud of you.
Thank you. Overwhelmed by that. Thank you so much. Everyone here was definitely on my mind as I did that work over the four years, really trying to represent the district well. And I really appreciate all the support from Dr. Hill, Dr. Haiti, Danielle, the whole team. It's been really overwhelming, positively overwhelming, so thank you. I'm gonna continue with the fun train. We're still on the fun train from the first few presentations tonight. And it was mentioned earlier, you know, we're doing things that I think are really special here in the district with this new sustainable agriculture course being one of them. We've had the bus this week, we've had amazing, you know, just heard about our amazing students. I felt really proud to hear about all their accomplishments, really impressed. And this is one of the other things that I think we're doing that's notable that will begin next year. So, Mr. Oblan is the teacher of this course, or will be the teacher of this course, and he was not able to make it tonight. So, I'm gonna do my very best to represent the course and him, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. So, next year, we're starting a sustainable agriculture course. We have about, I think, 12 to 15 students that are signed up for this course at the high school. And the, really, the highlight, and as President Fury said, are the facilities which Mr. Oblan and custodial staff and everybody have been working really hard to prepare for next year. So, I'm gonna, I'm looking at slides here, I know they're behind you, so hopefully I'll be able to time this well. So, what the course is, is really, as it says here, students are going to learn about sustainable agriculture, gardening, growing food. And really, the idea for the course, Mr. Oblan had really the main idea for it, but I was also interested, and I had talked to Dr. Haiti about starting something like this in the district because it has sort of taken off, you know, when you look on TV, HGTV, and out in the world, there are a lot of people, there are shows on urban gardening and backyard gardening, and this is something that's really taken off, besides the fact that it has a pretty high level of utility and it is great, these are great skills to have. So, we will begin the course next year, as it says here. There will be some aspects of the course that are not only scientific, but will incorporate business practices that come with sustainable agriculture in problem-solving, and the students are actually going to have the opportunity to go off-site out into the community and visit actual sustainable farms. We've been able to locate several of those, one in Bloomfield. Not gonna make that mistake, we're in Windsor. One in Hartford, and it's, I really think, as students see their friends in this course, I think it's going to be an exciting possibility for our students. So, what will this entail? We have two spaces at the high school that will be used for this course. The spaces are currently being used for AP Environmental Science, gardening club. So, we have, if everyone's familiar, on the second floor, we have an enormous greenhouse, and we also have what used to be the snake room, which is, which I can't say, I'm too sad to see go, which was very cool, right? That was also something we did in the past that was pretty innovative, but now we have a hydroponics lab that Mr. Oblan has been working for about a year now, really, to set up, thanks to WEF grant and now grant funding through another, I think it was a title grant that, a title grant that we had. So, what's hydroponics? It's growing plants without soil. So, if you get a chance to see the lab, it's giant plastic towers that allow plants to grow using water and nutrients and LED lights. And he did provide a detailed sort of look at what the system looks like here. So, you have, it looks almost like PVC pipes, the plants sit in them, and nutrient-dense solution, sort of water-based, runs through and allows the plants to grow. So, students are currently in his AP class, are getting a chance to dabble in this, and then next year, when we run the sustainable agriculture course, we'll have it as a, you know, actual time for really just intensive learning on how to run a hydroponic system. Aquaponics, which we also have going on in that lab, which is pretty cool. All the difference is, you're growing plants without soil, and then you're adding fish. So, we have a giant tank of very happy, because goldfish, they get fed really well, and fish waste forms the fertilizer, believe it or not. And it adds, it's a very efficient way for plants to grow, and it cuts down on the use of fertilizers and artificial means. So, in our labs, the ones that Mr. Oblan has already started, there are no pesticides in those labs, so students are learning how to grow plants without pesticides. And they do take the vegetables home, the plants home, sometimes teachers are taking those as well. They just harvested, I believe, last week or the week before. And don't worry, the fish don't stay there over the summer. The fish go home with students and teachers. So, no fish are harmed in the aquaponics lab. Okay, so, and what I think is remarkable, and really shout out to him... Okay, so, and what I think is remarkable, and really shout out to him, he has built this entire system himself. He has an incredible wealth of knowledge around this. And as, if you go and see it, it's mind-blowing. He has really set up this whole system for our students, and it's very cool. That's the best I can say, it's very cool. So, as he put in the slides, and again, I'll do my best to represent what he wanted to share, but it's, again, very sustainable, safe, and innovative way to grow plants, particularly with our students, plants that are edible. So, learn, they can learn how to actually grow vegetables. And these are systems that, once they learn how to do it, can be replicated at home, and they can actually share these kinds of skills with family and friends and teach them how to do it. So, takes up less space. We don't need herbicides, we don't need pesticides, we don't have fertilizers running off and polluting. Everything is contained in those areas. Hey? It does use a little bit more electricity, because we are using the lights, and that's the main sort of trade-off. But what's fun is that, you know, the students are really getting a chance to learn something totally new. I don't think anyone else is doing this. I think this is another one of the examples of us doing something here in Windsor that's unique. He included some photos. There actually were a couple of videos. They're very difficult to load, so unfortunately, I'm not gonna be able to show those to you. But as we go through the slides, Robin, if you can advance the slides, there's one that says, located in former snake room. The next one, yep. So, now you can really get a visual of what the, so this is the aquaponics and hydroponics lab. And again, he really created, he innovated all of this and built all of it. He has over 1,200 grow sites, so students, there's, it actually grows quite a bit, it yields quite a bit of vegetation. You'll see, you'll see some of our students as we advance the slides. These are AP Environmental Science students. They get to actually do hands-on experiments and learn through these methods. So, it's not just for fun. They're actually learning pretty advanced skills and conducting research in these labs. There is a slide of our 20 goldfish that call the aquaponics lab home. And again, no worries, they will have very lovely homes in the summertime. Mr. Oblon and I have talked about the possibility of updating to tilapia, which are, which can be used in these labs, and we have priced out what that might look like. It does bring up a little bit of an issue about what we do with them at the end of the school year. They are pretty tasty, but I don't, I don't know if we're necessarily, so, but we can, we can use, so, they require a bigger tank, obviously, and, but they do, they do a really good job of fertilizing. And he has set up the system for filtration, for keeping the water clean, prohibiting, you know, algae growth and everything, and he's been able to do this all, really. He's quite a smart and innovative and clever person, and we have him right here in Windsor. We're really lucky. He wanted you to know that it operates off a reverse osmosis system that filters the tap water. We might wanna Google that. I think that's a scientific thing that happens with water, that filters it. He did, honestly, we met, he did try to explain it to me, and it's, my degrees are in English literature and English leadership. So, I trust him that this works, because it's been working. And then, it just shows you, as we go through the photos, of actually how the system works, with the water that comes from the fish tank, the fertilizer's added, and it goes to the plants. And you'll see, just again, some photos of our students. They learn how to germinate seeds. They learn all kinds of skills that are really applicable out there in the world and are useful, and allow them to conduct scientific research. So, there's some great photos here of them, of them germinating their seeds, transferring them into the hydroponic system, and so on. So, if you would like to go through those, Robin. He thought, he thought that the board might be interested in why the lights are the colors that they are. Grow lights produce the red and blue colors used in photosynthesis. So, it really just mimics nature. As he said here, since plants reflect green light, grow lights do not waste energy, producing green wavelengths. This increases the efficiency of the system. And I really will compliment him in saying, he has left no stone unturned in creating this whole, these labs. Really lucky to have him, have him as a teacher. And you'll see, actually, some photos of strawberries that they just grew. I know they also just grew a multitude of different types of lettuce. There's a list on here, slide 28, Robin. That's all the things that they grew this year. So, they do grow some herbs. The students were surprised that there are many varieties of lettuce, so that was the one thing that they were, they learned this year. But actually, students were noting that they felt really, this is, this was sort of like a additional learning for them, was that they said they felt more informed when they go to the grocery store. So, they're going through the produce section, and they actually knew what a lot of the different variations were, and what some of the health benefits were of certain vegetables over others, which was not an intended learning outcome, but something that came out of it nonetheless. And we'll see lots of happy students here. They just grew kale, came out great, didn't have to worry about insects, like my kale, which never makes it through the summer. We also have, he's also been able to add something which is very cool, which is, he has an AI-regulated garden space in there. And he's teaching the students about how AI can be used for purposes of growing vegetables and fruits. Believe it or not, the AI will monitor the light and the water and make adjustments automatically, although he has said, humans do a better job. I'm just quoting him. And he just felt, and I agree, that this exposes students to some very, very cool ways and productive and ethical ways that AI can be used that maybe we haven't even thought of, right? Not just to write an essay, which we don't want necessarily happening, but actually monitoring and regulating plants. Okay, so you'll see some of the yields from the AI garden. They, I know they grew cilantro, and I believe at least five different types of lettuces, tomatoes. You'll see what appears to be a salad in one of the pictures. So, they actually get a chance to harvest and eat. Very cool, too, that he, that he helped to facilitate was a renovation of the greenhouse. So, the greenhouse was, needed repairs. We had toured the space with Megan Means and our supervisor for STEM, and there were elements to that greenhouse that really needed an update. So, we were able to use the grant money, and Carlos and his team were absolutely phenomenal in working with Mr. Oblon to renovate the greenhouse. So, we actually now have a drip water irrigation system in there. So, this is on the greenhouse side, not the hydroponics side. So, it's on a timer, and it allows, basically, what happens is it irrigates the plants without someone having to be there to do it. So, and he helped to set that up, actually. We had the roof vent repaired, so there was a panel on the roof that could be opened and closed, but it stopped working. Couldn't open it, and that's really necessary to ventilate the space, so they were able to have that repaired. And then, added eight new garden beds to the greenhouse, so that there would be more space for students to grow vegetables. Also, we added, or he added, I can't take credit for it, I just said, what do you need? And supported him on that, is a new weather station that will hopefully monitor the climate in the greenhouse. And he worked with our tech department to figure out how we could get this to work, because it needs to actually be hooked into the Wi-Fi, and things can be controlled on your phone. So, it helps with, as it says here, air quality, monitoring the moisture and the soil and the growing conditions in the greenhouse. So, we have some really high-tech stuff happening in these spaces, and thankfully, our students are getting, our students are getting a chance to do something really special. And just on the last slide, sort of what's the future of this course? Again, students getting to learn about the uses of AI when it comes to gardening, learning how hydroponics and aquaponics work. He's looking to run what he's calling a salad subscription, where teachers will be able to request bags of salad that come from the garden, and he's hoping to partner with the culinary classes to actually use the vegetables that come out of, come out of the garden. The other thing that is very, very cool that he added as an element to the course is, he's going to be teaching students some coding. So, he's actually going to teach them to build and code the automatic drip irrigation system. So, he, we bought some, at his request, some coding kits that he is going to, he's gonna work that in as far as the science education element is concerned in the class. And then, as I mentioned, field trips to local farms, and then every kid is going, every student will be taking home a little window herb garden that they grow in the class. So, we're happy to share this, this one. It's really exciting. It's fun, there's learning involved, the skills are useful, and it benefits a lot of people beyond just the students. It benefits their families, it benefits the staff. It's really, I think, gonna be a wonderful addition to what we're offering in our program.
Thank you very much.
If I did this justice.
First, I like, I have a question, I have a question for Mr. Panos. How was the lettuce you tried, Mr. Panos?
I'm not dead yet. I was looking for endives, but I had to settle for some kind of lettuce.
We'll put in a request.
Excuse me.
We'll put in a request.
Oh, thank you. Arugula, too, could you?
Sure.
I didn't see you complain, no.
No, no, no.
You had the whole leaf there. You didn't share it with us.
Yeah, I have a habit of doing that. But with boxes of this. So, yeah, it was quite interesting, and how clean the place was, too. It's just amazing. So, I'm just wondering, you know, if they do any experiments with various levels of CO2 in there, or other things like that, too? You know, regarding growth rates of growth.
I'm not aware of that, but that is definitely something that we can probably do an answer to in the future. I know that he has some high hopes for sort of the extent to which he can teach students different aspects of science in this one course, in these spaces. I could absolutely ask him and get you a good answer to that. I don't wanna just.
No, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions or comment? Mr. Wallaston?
Yes, just to reiterate, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Sorry, thank you so much. Look at you. Just to reiterate, where did the funding for this come again?
So, it started with a WEF grant that he, I believe, acquired last year. And then, I worked with him and Dr. Haiti to use money from a title grant that specifically goes to enriching our curriculum, particularly, one of the areas in that grant is around environmental science. So, it was the perfect grant for this project, and it was grant-funded.
Okay, yes.
Title IV, sorry. There's a lot of different.
I know WEF only does a little pennies, but shout out to WEF just one time.
Yes.
Besides that, this is an amazing, it's an amazing value-add, I'd just say, to the school and the community at large, Dr. Parker. I'm gonna be doing a walkthrough soon, just to visit. Yeah, I have to, because this is amazing, and I'm very proud of this work that you guys have done. And I gotta say, man, it's good timing. It's good timing, you know, good timing. Because this is the kind of stuff that we wanna see, especially with like the school bus, the mobile learning center. Like, these are the kind of innovative things that we're doing here in Windsor that really sets us apart from the way that a lot of these other towns and districts spend their monies, because you're not seeing a lot, as many innovative things come out of most districts. So, again, kudos to you, the team, and just all you guys at large. This is amazing.
Thanks. I just support. He's the expert.
Well, you're doing a well job, you're doing a great job. It's very hard to thrive if you're not supported.
Mr. Madison?
Yeah, so this is fantastic. So, Ian and I are like giving each other Google eyes over the inside-out thing here. This is the kind of stuff you gotta grow from, no pun intended, do from the bottom up, in terms of life skills, right? So, I'm very impressed with the industrial aspects of the high school. And like, my son's building his own guitar in this teen class this semester, and it's just totally motivating him, but it's an incredibly valuable life skill. And so, I love that we're doing this. Several things, just a couple of questions. So, I do agree with the use of AI. So, that's super cutting-edge. We all worry about, you know, how kids are gonna, you know, write their own term papers, or AI about five minutes, and we're all, hey, yeah, that's gonna happen, that sucks. Okay. But the reality is, AI is gonna scale beyond human beings to no end, but it's always gonna be an augmentation thing, or you're still gonna need the experts. So, I agree that if you have the human intuition feeding the AI, it's fantastic, but you're never gonna save the planet if you can't get the stuff to scale to a certain level, and AI scales in a way that humans don't. And so, eventually, we will get the brains of smart people like him into the AI, and the AI will grow the crops way better than any humans could. So, I love that we're incorporating that. I have a question on the business aspects, and the reason this is important is, if you're gonna save the world, you gotta make it a sustainable financial model, right? And so, like, my son gardens like crazy, with all his own allowance, and I had actually explained to him what crop futures are. I said, Joshua, if you try to do all this stuff and it fails, it's gonna suck, because you lost all your allowance. So, I said, tell you what, I'll take on a certain amount of the cost, but I get a certain cut of the crop, right? And I had to explain to him that if you lose everything, I lose part of the risk, you don't lose all your money. I said, or I'll give you full retail by the end of the year. So, he took a chance. He did full retail by the end of the year, he grew all his stuff, and I was paying him top dollar for all his organic food. And so, point is, that's like in a financial model around gardening. So, I'm curious around the financial aspects, because if you can do the AI and the finances, along with the stuff that's much better for the environment, it'll scale and save the world. What are the financial aspects? What do they teach the kids in the class around the business?
So, I believe that his goal is actually in the visits to actual farms, to really learn from them about how they are sort of grappling with and handling the financial aspects of it. The majority of what he's doing in the classroom will be the actual science of the, you know, growing and all of that stuff. I do think with the first iteration of the course, this will be the first time we're running it, he may find that as he goes into future versions of the course, that other things are sort of, he ends up spending more time on. But for now, a lot of that would be explored by speaking to people who are actually, this is their, this is their income, this is their, how they're feeding their families, so, not just with their own vegetables, but with making the money from them. So, that's one of the main ways that it would be taught, is realistically, what does this look like for people who are doing this in our local area, in our region?
That's awesome. Yeah, and I expect it to be a small percentage, but just, I think it's an important part.
Yeah, it really, really is.
Thank you.
Let me add in there for you, Mr. Madison, a great commentary and question. So, if you guys remember, we did a podcast on this at the very beginning of the year, where we had Ms. Hines from WEF. And so, you know, the financial genesis of this was from WEF, so we greatly appreciate that. And I told him at the time, you know, I really like what he's doing, go get the money, we have money. Just keep doing, I'm glad he listened, and just kept going. The business part, I said, I did talk to him, you know, September, I said, this is gonna come. That's not his bailiwick, but I would expect that we would make a connection with our business teachers. And, you know, somehow, you do an interdisciplinary lesson, as you stated, that's, I'm used to that in schools in which I've worked in the past 30 years plus, where we worked across disciplines to show students the interconnectedness of what you're learning versus learning everything in a silo, right? Because they'll say, oh, that's for the science class.
Right.
Well, the scientist has no value unless it has usefulness for society, right? You just don't sit in a lab and, I discovered something, right? It has to be, there has to be some utilitarian piece to it. And the business folks understand how to make it work in the economy. So, I like your comments, and we'll make sure we follow up, but I'm very proud of them, I'm very excited. When I did the podcast with them, I was like, wow, this is so interesting. Whatever you need, just keep asking for it. I'm glad to hear the greenhouse was repaired, because it was in disrepair when we did the podcast, and he said, I need this, I need, I said, you're not asking anybody anything, you're not gonna get anything not asking. So, you gotta open your mouth, and really, he did.
Yeah, he really spearheaded it, took a lot of time. He works a lot of hours outside of his regular school day, that he's been working a lot of hours to put this together.
Yeah. Imagine. Ms. Taylor, and then Ms. Soder.
This is amazing. I'm very excited. I feel like we missed a little bit of opportunity. We should've had Ms. Amanda Inex stay behind to tell us more about it from a teacher, from a student perspective, because I know that her and a few of the students that are going off for biology are really, I've heard from them, they're like blown away, they would like to continue this. And what you're seeing here, for everyone that doesn't know, this is what's happening on the college level. This is, we're like, we're ahead of ourselves, always. I will also say that I've done this twice for the last two years with the organization I work for, with Levo out of, Levo International out of Bloomfield. And so, they have the large, you know, greenhouses and the hydroponics, and what they're doing is feeding people, like literally feeding people. And it came out of a lot of work done in Haiti, where instead of giving people fish, they're teaching them how to fish. And from a sustainability perspective, and from, you know, just a cost perspective, we know the costs of things are just going up, 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 and the things that we're eating, we know probably aren't great for us, because they're being sprayed with pesticides, and I could go on and on and on. So, when I'm thinking about, James and I have been talking about this forever, I just would love to see, this is something I can talk about offline to the board or something, I feel like we're trending in our great direction of having something like feel like we're trending in our, our great direction of having something like this on the agenda every month, to see what's going on inside and really peeling back the onion, no pun intended, to really see what's happening, you know, for informational purposes, not just for the board, but for the listening public, because the regular person, you know, person that is in town would not know that this is happening, and it's a huge opportunity. So thank you to not only you, but your entire team, and, and he's amazing. You know, we're getting top-notch educators here, so I'm, I don't, it's not lost on me. I know they could be anywhere in the world, working, and they're working in Windsor, and we're very lucky. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Soder.
I'm actually just wondering, because, so this course is going to kick off in the fall, right? Is there a way that we could maybe put a pin in potentially having students come in maybe after the first trimester to talk about their experience? I really like a closed loop, and thinking about it theoretically on paper is, is amazing, but would really love to hear what the kids are gaining from it, from their perspective, if that's something that maybe we could do.
I would love that, you know, Dr. Parker would need to approve that, but I don't see why not.
Would that be okay, Dr. Parker?
And I love the idea that Ms. Taylor brought up about having different spotlights about what's happening, and I'll put a plug in for the, this one is an awesome one, and then the, I'm very excited, quick, quick plug, for the EMT certification class that we'll be starting, which I think is going to be absolutely phenomenal. We're at max capacity, we have students waiting that I'm hearing are waiting to get into that course, and we're going to have an actual simulation lab. Students will be able to work on simulation mannequins, and some really state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art items that we're getting grant, everything grant funded, grant funded, two different grants, and this will be another addition, I think, to what we're offering that's very unique to Windsor, and that students really are not going to be able to get in other places.
Mr. Madison, anybody else first time? Mr. Madison?
Just one more plug, I love what you said, Dr. Hill, about the cross-disciplinary, because that's just how real life works. The other one is, you mentioned coding in the system, and I also know that we have an excellent computer science program. I know this because I grilled the guy who runs it, because I do auditing of, of systems, I've audited hundreds of systems in a big financial company over like years. And so I, I governed him one afternoon, I said, okay, tell me about, and I know the 50 questions, and he nailed the stuff, right? So he's actually doing all the right things. I'd want to make sure that this aligns, if you're going to have people writing code in anything, that, to the, the languages and techniques they use. Because I also wonder if the coding gets too hard for someone who's not a coder, let's face it, if you're drawn to agriculture, you probably take this class, if you're drawn to code, you probably go to the computer science stuff. This is where cross-disciplinary, the geeky people are probably going to the computer class, different kind of geek in the, the growing, I suppose, but it just, I'd want to make sure that they're using the same set of technology, because it's a really good stack that he's using, and it's the same technology stack that my wife and I go in and teach on Career Day in the middle school, so it'll really line up for the kids. So just, just another cross-disciplinary opportunity is to say, if you're going to code, intersect with the, the computer science team that might be even more advanced, and make sure they're all using the same tech, tech stacks, so they can all work together kind of.
I can definitely have them talk to you. I know that it's called MicroBit, is the coding platform, and it comes in a kit. So there are kits that we ordered, that he asked me to order. I think they're, from what I saw, they, they seem to be pretty common, these are, these are kind of the run-of-the-mill, what most people use, especially if they're teaching these skills.
Yeah.
But that's certainly a, a great suggestion for us to have, and, and the teachers in, in our departments just tend to seek each other out and work together, too.
Yeah. Well, the only reason is, is, you know, the learn to code thing, that was fameth or infamous over the years, depending on who said it. I don't, I don't think that means you're going to turn to a full-time coder. I think that means that code is permeating the entire world, whether you like it or not, and if you could just do a little bit of code, you magnify what you're doing, especially if you're looking at the AI, so yeah, good stuff.
Anyone else? I want to thank you, and I also want to thank Dr. Hill. Dr. Hill said to board members, come in to see our school, come in. And so when Joe said to us over breakfast, I'd like you to see the hydroponics, luckily Dr. Parker was around, I said, do you think you can fit your schedule so that someone can show it to us? And then Joe wanted us to see his science class, it was a physics class going on, and seeing the students working in small groups on task, looked like real learning going on. So again, very impressed with our, our time there. So thank you again for the presentation, and.
Thank you.
And the, the goal is to each month try to highlight another school, something interesting, something different going on.
Fantastic.
Next item on the agenda is item number three, audience to visitor, and I'll look to Robin.
Good evening, this is Robin Daly from the superintendent's office. If anyone from the public would like to address the board, you may do so in two ways. You may type your name, address, and comment into the Q and A feature in the Zoom application, or you may speak by clicking raise hand and dialing star nine on the Zoom application. When you're called on to speak, you'll be given three minutes to state your name, address, and comment. Please do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own, and no comments will be made by the board at this time.
Thank you. Is there any, is there anyone in the boardroom who'd like to address the board tonight? Not seeing anyone, is there anyone online with a hand raised?
There is not.
Okay, without objections, I'm going to close audience to visitor. Audience to visitors closed. Next on, on the agenda is the consent agenda, and before we have a motion, are there any items that board members would like polled?
Well, take out just one question on the finance report.
So if you could read everything but the finance.
Thank you, President Fury. I move the Board of Education approved consent agenda items for B enrollment report, 5C food service report, and 4D.
Should have been, I guess. It's all four.
Yeah, 4C, food service report, and 5D, human resources report.
Keeping us on our toes here.
Keeping me on my toes.
Is there a second?
A second motion.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Pianos, for the consent agenda items for B, 4C, and 4D. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, abstention, motion carries eight zero zero. Another motion, Ms. Taylor?
Yep, I move the Board of Education approved consent agenda item for a financial report.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Pianos to approve the financial report. Mr. Pianos with questions to start it.
Well, the first one obvious is, we're down to apparently a projected surplus of 1,600, which is close to zero. Are we looking potentially going over here? And this is.
No. Nope, so the intent, which I, I believe explained, so any, because we did freeze the budget because of our insurance.
Because?
We froze our budget for, because of our insurance claims, because they're so high, so you're seeing that amount, because any dollar amount that comes back, that is the balance, I am going to put into the insurance fund.
Sure.
So that's why you see just that 1,630.
Right, yeah, I mean, this is almost nothing in, in the budget. Well, yeah, this is, yeah, this is quite interesting. You see some wide variations here, and the magnet school tuition, though, is, is projected to be quite high surplus, or so to speak.
Yeah, so that, because we didn't, last year when we budgeted for magnet school, it was not in legislation yet to receive that 58% maximum. So that made legislation this school year, excuse me, so that's why you see that giant surplus, which was not known until recently.
Okay.
And we're very hopeful that it's going to roll to next year as well.
Right. Well, well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other questions? The motion on the floor was to accept the financial report. Motion was made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Pianos. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay, abstention, motion carries eight zero zero. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any minutes, there's four different ones, that anybody wants polled? Seeing and hearing none, we'll let secretary make a motion.
Move the Board of Education approve the minutes from April 8th, 2025, regular meeting, April 29th, 2025, curriculum committee meeting, May 5th, 2025, special meeting, and May 13th, 2025, curriculum committee meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Pianos. I assume there's no discussion, looking left and right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay, abstention, motion carries eight zero zero. Next item is our student representative report. Ms. Khan.
Good evening, everyone. This past, this past month has been quite busy, and as we get closer and closer to the end of the year, we have many upcoming events and ceremonies that will be taking place. Throughout this past month, we've had several induction ceremonies for our Windsor High School Honor Societies, including Spanish Honor Society, Rho Kappa Social Studies Honor Society, and our National Honor Society. We also had our spring blood drive, where we collected 152 pints of blood, which is enough to save 456 lives. The Windsor High School Choral Department competed in New Jersey this year during the Music in the Parks Festival. Both choirs, as well as individual students, took home several awards. The Windsor High School Gospel Choir won first place in their category with a rating of superior. The Chamber Choir won first place with a superior rating. Gospel Choir won best overall choir with an outstanding rating. And students Jaden Daly and Maya White won most outstanding accompanist, and Kiki Romero-Lewis won most outstanding soloist. The Windsor High School Band also competed this year in the Music in the Parks Festival in Agua, Massachusetts. They took home several awards, including, they took home several awards. Jazz Band took home a first place award with a rating of superior. Concert Band took home second place award with an excellent rating, and the Jazz Ensemble won first place overall. The Band Department also won the Esprit de Corps Award, also known as the Spirit Award. And our Windsor High School Orchestra visited the University of Connecticut, and they played various compositions alongside students from UConn. We held our spring concerts this past month, including orchestra choir and band, and we've also announced our co-valedictorians, Sam Garcia and Amanda Inay. Our robotics team participated in their CIAC state championship this past Sunday, and our softball team had their senior night yesterday. Seniors Ashley Garrison, Aleah Graves, Hannah Oberle, and Sydney Hicks were all recognized. Upcoming events, we have our art show tomorrow in the library, and our fashion show next week Tuesday. Juniors will be taking the NGSS test this Thursday. Our all-school awards ceremony takes place this Thursday at 6:00 PM. Our boys lacrosse team has their senior night tomorrow. Our boys volleyball team has their senior night tomorrow. Our girls lacrosse team has their senior night Friday. Our baseball team has their senior night Friday. And our tennis team has their senior night next Tuesday. Our honor cords and scholarship ceremony takes place next week, Thursday at 6:00 PM, and our senior outing is this Friday, May 23rd, at Holiday Hill in Prospect, Connecticut. The annual senior walk is next week, Wednesday. Seniors will be walking throughout their elementary schools, wearing their caps and gowns. Senior prom takes place next week, Saturday, and finals start June 3rd and June 6th, and makeup examples will take place on June 9th. There will be two graduation rehearsals, Monday, June 9th, and Tuesday, June 10th, which are both mandatory for all seniors to attend. Seniors will be receiving their graduation tickets after the rehearsal on Monday. Graduation will be taking place Tuesday, June 10th, and students will be taking buses from the high school to the Bushnell in Hartford. Following the ceremony, project graduation will be taking place at the high school, which is a free event for all the seniors, thanks to the hard work of the Windsor community and parent volunteers who've been working hard all year. Thank you.
Thank you. Quite a lot of information there. Any questions or comments for our student representative, Ms. Taylor?
I was at the Music in the Park in New Jersey. Well done, and well-deserved honors. You are part of the Chamber Choir, so well done. I was also at your senior spotlight, so we want to clap it up for that, too. Well done. So it's, it's been great to just pop my head into all the senior activities and senior nights. I was there in the cold, as we, our softball girls battled Glastonbury into the night. I'd had to go home. But it was very, very well attended and, and very nice. Thank you very much. You always bring all the information.
Thank you. Anyone else with a comment or question? Mr. Pianos?
Yeah, I attended the band concert. That was really quite impressive, the jazz, the jazz and, and the rest of the band. So you're doing a very good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Khan, you know the drill here, if you'd like to stay, but I understand it's, you don't want to have to come back to Windsor High this summer or anything, so you're, you're free to go if you'd like. Next item on the agenda is the Board of Education's part, and the president's report, reiterating what Ms. Khan talked about with the Rho Kappa Social Studies Honor Society induction. I was there on April 24th for that, and spoke at the National Honor Society induction after that. On April 29th, I attended the Family and Community Partnership Dinner at Windsor High School. It was great to see so many people who contribute to Windsor Public Schools, and the organizations include those such as Amazon and Niagara, who are giving us money to, to do a lot of the things that, that our budgets couldn't necessarily do on, on their own. And to see organizations such as Kiwanis and the Lions and things that, it takes, you know, the old, the old adage, it takes a village, and it really does, and it's, but it's nice to also be honored, to honor those who, who go the, the extra steps. I attended most of the teacher appreciation breakfast. It's always great to be able to connect with staff in, you know, smaller settings like that at each school, and really, kudos to Patty Patton and her staff. They continue to surprise us each year with additions. This year, there were some pretty fancy quiches there, including a Greek quiche with feta cheese. Mr. Pianos, I don't know if you've tried that or not. It was Greek to me, but I don't know.
It's Italian to me.
And I attended, unfortunately, Mr. Lockhart usually makes all of these, and of all times to have some, some stomach distress that unrelated to the teacher appreciation breakfast, I actually outnumbered him at the number of breakfasts attended, and I know Tracy was able to attend, and Mr. Pianos, and also Jill over at JFK. I know some folks with their jobs, they can't get out. That's one of the nice things about being retired.
Yep.
I attended, as people already mentioned, a great spring choir performance, and again, hats off to one of the, those who were in the spotlight this time, what a beautiful voice. I was talking to a friend of, of Ms. Khan's, and she said, oh yeah, she practiced in front of me, she was unbelievable, I was so, unbelievable voice that she had. And sometimes when you're in a choir, a chorus, you don't hear individuals unless you happen to have a little solo for part of it, so that was, that was great. I had, I attended the WEF fundraising, WEF, Windsor Education Foundation fundraising at DOMS, and I got a phone call later in the afternoon from a Mr. Wallaston, who said, you happened to have won a raffle prize, so, and, and he personally delivered it. So WEF goes the extra mile. I attended both of our curriculum committee meetings, the civics one on April 29th, and American history on May 13th, and we'll be discussing those committee meetings later in our, our meeting tonight. Along with Ms. Taylor, Mr. Lockhart, Mr. Pianos, and Ms. Soder, we attended the big reveal yesterday at JFK, and very excited for how the, our mobile bus is going to be used this summer and in the future. And I hope, I know we're at the end of the sports season, there's still some games probably still left. I encourage, I was at the Varsity and the JV baseball games on Monday. I could not stay for the girls' softball game later that evening, but I have attended a girls' softball game earlier. And Sage Park also has their sports. And if it's a nice night, great way to support our students and have some fun. That's my report. Any questions? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda, 7B, is revision to the 2025-2026 school calendar. Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to ask Ms. Dale Batcholder, Chief of Operations, to take care of this agenda.
So we are bringing forth the school calendar because we, as I'm sure most of you know, we, over a few years ago, we always, in this region, followed the Creck-Magnus School Calendar. And this is mainly for staff that have students in other districts, live around town. So everyone has the same April break as much as we possibly can. So that was the major change to the 25-26 calendar. And then we also added three additional early-release days for teacher PD. And then we also added... Or, excuse me, we changed the high school exam schedule in order to have the same number of days in Semester 1 as in Semester 2.
Okay, your motion?
Here it is. I move the Board of Education approve changes to their approved 2025-2026, changing the April break dates to Monday, April 13th, 2026, through Friday, April 17th, 2026, changing the Windsor High School exam week to January 12th, 2026, through January 16th, 2026, and adding three additional early-release days for teacher professional development.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos. Discussion. Mr. Panos?
Just clarify the three additional early days for teacher professional development. This is not an idea of... We're not adding days.
No.
Okay, and why we're calling them early release? Where were they doing this professional development before?
So during negotiations of the teacher contract, one of the gives was that we would allow the teachers their four days of... Four times a month, they stay an hour after school hours for planning, or either for PLCs or principal-led meetings. We gave one of those days back, so now they're only required to stay three. They're required to stay four, but that fourth allows them to do extra planning, get reports done, paperwork done, that kind of thing. It's not employer-led. These early-release days, we can now use what we used to use for our PLC time with teachers to be able to gather all the data that we usually had on the fourth additional day.
So there's no reduction in the student...
No.
Teaching time?
Not at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing, hearing, none. I'll bring that to a vote. All those to approve, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries eight zero zero. Next item on the agenda is a discussion of the limits to free speech of students during school-sponsored speech as opposed to private student speech. And this is a continuation, really, from a discussion we had at a previous meeting. And Mr. Panos, do you want to lead this?
Yes, thank you. Just a reason for bringing this up again. Statements made during the March and April meetings that a board member who criticizes the Windsor High School morning announcements by students is attempting to violate their First Amendment rights to free speech. And this went on... The origin of this was the February beginning announcements that began with a scripted statement about President Trump as follows. "Even though Donald Trump has refused to acknowledge Black History Month, we at Windsor High will be celebrating, as the saying goes. And we do not need his permission to celebrate Black History Month." Now, the statement that President Trump did not acknowledge the Black History Month was factually incorrect. He had proclaimed February as Black History Month. In fact, he did so in the four years he was in office before that. Nothing new. So I emailed to Dr. Hill and Dr. Parker and this statement. And the next day, or the next time that the Dub Hub was made, this statement about President Trump was dropped. The statement, of course, was not corrected, so I brought the subject up during March Board of Ed meeting for discussion. And this led to arguments in which board members said that trying to do this or asking for this is trying to prevent students from announcing what they wanted was an attempt to violate the freedom of speech of the students. So I asked President Fury to ask the legal opinion of our board attorney, Thomas Mooney, if such correcting of students' announcements was a violation of the First Amendment rights of the students. Before he got back to his answer, we had the April meeting. And during that meeting, Town Council member Anthony King was a former board member here and a member. And then another person, a member of the public, spoke in audience to visitors, in which they chided me for attempting to stifle the free speech of the students. And that, you know, so obvious this was out into the public. And so the question is, is it? You know, is it an attempt to stifle free speech? Furthermore, at that meeting, Mr. Lockhart even took the opportunity to elaborate on this during the, of all things, when the... As part or at the end of the JFK student presentation on composting. A little unusual. But anyway, the opinion by the attorney meanwhile comes in and contradicts the idea put forth by these opinions that the morning announcement by students is protected by First Amendment. So let me read a bit about it. Just give it... Given that the Dub Hub... This is from the attorney. "Given that Dub Hub announcements are scheduled and presented to other students as part of daily life at Windsor High, such announcements are school-sponsored speech as opposed to private student speech. That distinction is crucial in determining the scope of student-free speech rights and conversely, the right of school officials to regulate that speech. When students speak privately, their speech is broadly protected. However, as described below, school officials are authorized to regulate student speech in school-sponsored speech whenever they have a legitimate educational interest in doing so. Applying that standard to the situation involved in Dub Hub announcements, Dr. Hill had the right to require the students to refrain from making incorrect statements. The Dub Hub provides information to students at Windsor High and is also a learning experience for the students participating in making the announcements." So accordingly, such announcements are clearly school-sponsored speech, and Dr. Hill and administration more broadly have a legitimate educational interest in ensuring that student statements and Dub Hub are factually correct. So this, by extension, of course, anyone who pointed this out, in this particular case, as I did, this has nothing to do with attempting to stifle anyone's free speech. The... He goes on to say a little bit more. "The foregoing conclusion concerns the right of the administration to regulate student speech in school-sponsored activities." Described it in detail below. "However, there's no affirmative obligation to correct the misstatement after it has been made. Whether and how to make a correction is a matter for the administration's decision. So the administration can decide whether it is adequate to assure the students stop making the statement or whether an affirmative statement of correction is required." I just thought that, now, in any case, quite frankly, I think the administration has the authority to not even correct it or not even stop it, for that matter. I don't think it's... You know, I don't have the... I certainly, as a board member, have no authority to stop it, yet I find myself accused of it. The board only acts, you know, when the... A board member only has authority when he is acting as a whole with the board, and it takes a majority, a vote at least, in order to have that authority. So I'm not... I wasn't attempting to do anything like this, and this was not a violation of student speech. However, I did think that it was a what you call teachable moment, that it's appropriate that, you know, when a student makes an error, they could have, you know, simply tell them that they could have looked this up, and it was available. So I just want to clarify that so that, you know, we don't have it out in the public or that if a student, you know, is doing something in school-sponsored speech, that it's any kind of violation of free speech. So, thank you. I don't mean to carry this on, but anyway.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to the school liaison reports. First is Windsor High School. Ms. Taylor and Mr. Wallaston. Ms. Taylor, I'll have you go first.
Okay. So much to share. Okay. So Ms. Khan did mention Project Graduation, but I just want to add some deadlines about that. The lawn signs that you see all over town celebrating graduates, you still have a few more days if you'd like to purchase one. That is at a cost. It is a fundraiser for Project Graduation. And you can still flock a friend. I did. Did you enjoy that? Okay. There's still a few days to flock a friend. Again, a fundraiser for Project Graduation till May 31st. And so if you want to do either of those things, you can follow Project Graduation on Facebook, or you can email projectgraduation@winzerct@gmail.com and reach out to the team, and they can get you locked in. If you would like to just send a donation, you can also shoot an email, and they can pick it up, or you can mail it to them, or you can use Cash App. Dollar sign, Project Graduation, W H S, if you just want to send a little love to Project Graduation. I also want to share that 10 out of the 12 Shad Derby contestants this year all attend Windsor High School. Amazing. I know a few. I know them all. So just want to shout out the queen, Hannah Donzella, and... Yeah. Oh, yeah. The queen is Hannah Donzella. Yep. First Princess Sydney Hicks. Saw her in her senior night last night. We have sec... She's First Princess. Second Princess Chloe Taylor. She's also the Vincent Scully Award recipient. We have Eva Passon. She was Princess Royale. And then Charlotte Anderson won Miss Congeniality and the Mary Ellen Messina Community Service Essay Award. So shout out to all 10, but all of the five of the court were all Windsor High School, class of 2025.
Do you know any one of these?
You know, Chloe Taylor looks familiar to me. Yes, congratulations to all. But yes, my baby was on the float. Thank you.
Yeah, that's my...
Yeah, not much else to report for me. Yeah, not much else to report for me. Congrats, Chloe. You were amazing.
Any questions on the high school? We will go to Sage Park. I'll start with Ms. Soder.
I was going to wait until after Mr. Panos went. Is that okay?
Okay. We have all the answers here. All right. Promotion is June 9th. House 6 is at 8:15, and House 5 is at 10:15. The band concert, 7 o'clock on the 21st. So that's short notice. The 7th grade is going on their 50th... Oh, the 50th trip. Not their 50th trip, but the 50th trip that Sage Park is to Cape Cod. Everyone's on the 27th through 29th of May. Yeah. So that should be exciting. They're all done with the state testing. And so I understand that the preliminary data looks good as on the authority principle. They're having a fantastic music festival on the 23rd. And there are quite a few field trips scheduled for the end of the year. PTO meeting will be Wednesday next week, which is May 28th at 6 o'clock at Sage Park Library. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything to add, Ms. Soder?
The only thing I want to add is shout out to the Sage Park PTO, who did some extra supplemental teacher appreciation events for the teachers. So very nice to see the parents get involved. And then just thank you to all of our Sage Park educators, because I know May is a crazy testing month, and you all did it as gracefully as possible. And you all still have lovely hairs and smiles on your face, so it could have, must have gone... Okay. So thank you for everything.
Thank you. Any questions for Sage Park? Ms. Taylor?
Not a question, but I did attend the choral concert. And the new choral teacher at Sage Park is amazing. Outstanding. We were rocking, and kids, like my son, who, you know, very shy, not wanting to be up in front of people. They were amazing. There's these young ladies... We felt like we were on Broadway, right? Were we shy? We felt like we were... They were locked in, and I, you know, we looked at each other like, "Dr. White is getting some really amazing talents to replace the amazing talent she's going to lose." But it was really great to see young people, especially my son, who is neurodivergent, to really be locked in and having a teacher that lets them do their thing, equipped with their own band. It was awesome. It was awesome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Next is Clover Street School. Mr. Madison?
Thank you. On May 3rd, the K kids participated in the community cleanup along with lots of folks from the town. May 9th was the neighborhood walk by the All Children Exercising Simultaneously Group. All of May, the K kids are collecting items for the homeless. On May 29th, there's a trip to High Meadow. On May 30th, the field day for the whole school. And then on June 2nd, Paquannic's 2nd graders will visit so they can see what's coming in the future and get excited about that. And then June 4th, the 5th grade talent show. And on June 5th, the 5th grade promotion will be held at the high school.
Very good. Any questions for Clover? I noticed that it is going to be at the high school. Last time, I think you were there at LP. It was pretty packed trying to do it there, so...
Yeah.
I think that's a good move. Mr. Panos, do you have any report from Jill for JFK?
Oh, afraid not. No.
Okay. I know she... Well, what's going on? Do you know anything going on at JFK?
I mean, I haven't... If it's okay, I would like to highlight a couple of amazing things that have happened at JFK, starting with the art show that happened last Monday. Windsor Public School's very own Teacher of the Year, Ms. Ellie Lloyd. I never cease to be amazed when I walk into her art show and how she creates such an amazing atmosphere and displays the kids' art. And it's always a packed house. The kids get so excited. So really phenomenal. And thank her... Thank you, Ms. Lloyd, for all of the hard work that you put into that. Shout out to Mr. Potter, who's going to be running Field Day, hopefully on Friday for the JFK kids. Hopefully won't have to be postponed. I know the weather is looking a little wonky. And then also coming up is the completion of I-Ready math testing this week. So another lot of testing in May, but the teachers have done a really great job keeping the kids motivated. So phenomenal job to our educators at JFK helping those kids out. And then we also have the fifth grade picnic that will be held on June 4th. Really great for the fifth graders to be able to spend the day with their peers and kind of say goodbye to the school that they'd been in for the past three years. I'm getting hot talking about it because I've loved JFK for the past three years. And then they have their step-up promotion on Friday, the 6th. And then I'm going to be a middle school mom. So amazing job, JFK. I know, right? So just really great things happening at the school. And another shout out to the PTO who did amazing work over the Teacher Appreciation Week. There was something for the teachers every day. So Caitlin Craig and Jen Bernardino, we appreciate you. Thank you for everything you do to support our schools and our teachers.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Otter subbing for Ms. Cantor at JFK? And I do want to note that Ms. Cantor also went to the art show and was there for the appreciation breakfast as well. Next, we have Oliver Ellsworth School, Mr. Lockhart.
All right, let's see here. PTO meeting will be this coming Thursday. This coming Friday, the Science Fair, I believe, will be hosted in the gym. That's my understanding. All right, next Tuesday is going to be the retirement breakfast of those that are retiring from the building. That's my understanding. On May 28th, we are having the pre-grad graduations. Two separate ones, one for the AM class and one for the PM class. And the week culminates on May 29th with Field Day. So I'm looking forward to attending that and having some fun with all the activities that's going to be going on and some of the special surprises that I will not leak out.
Ah, okay. Any questions for Oliver Ellsworth? Next, we have Paquonic, Mr. Hallic.
Thank you. On Good Friday, Paquonic did their annual Easter egg hunt, as I reported last time. It went very, very well. Our students participated in an egg hunt and met the Easter bunny as well.
That bunny gets around.
He does.
Big bunny, big bunny.
It was a tall one.
But the great thing about it was a lot of family stayed afterwards as well and, you know, hung out on the playground with their families and just hung out and had a great time. And it's a great event every single year, so I really enjoy that. Principal Mahalco as well as students and staff marched in this past weekend's SHAD Derby Parade. That was awesome to see as well. I'm guessing, weather permitting, Field Day will be tomorrow, May 21st. Memorial Day, obviously, this coming Monday, May 26th, there'll be no school. The next PTO meeting will be June 2nd from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the library. And shout out to the PTO. They do great work all year round. At Paquonic, for Teacher Appreciation Week, but also doing different events with the students as well throughout the school year. So definitely thank them for all their hard work and their efforts. And the string students, they had a special field trip to the Bushnell to experience the Hartford Symphony Orchestras, which was called Exploring Emotions. And Paquonic also had a strings concert last night, which I was able to attend for a few minutes. So that was a really cool event as well. So that concludes my report for Paquonic. Thank you.
And I know it was well attended because I live not far there and the cars were down the road and across the next side street as well. So that's good.
It was, yes.
Any questions for Paquonic? Okay, that concludes the liaison reports. Next item on the agenda is number eight, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will quickly go through my updates. Once again, you guys have taken some of my thunder, but I'm gonna repeat some stuff. I wish Ms. Otter would not have spoke on JFK, but I knew she wasn't gonna let it go. Mamas just don't let go. But she's going to the middle school. There. Now, just. So today, we had our last coffee talk of the year. And it was well attended. We also had the mobile classroom outside of BARTS, which was unveiled yesterday. And for those folks who have not seen the news, have not heard the news, I'm going to just tell you a little bit about it. This was the brainchild of Dr. Haiti. So this is like over a year and a half of thinking. For her, it's like three years of thinking. So a year and a half for us being aware and nine months of building. But it's a bold and innovative initiative designed to bring academic support, enrichment, and joy directly to students in their neighborhoods. This mobile unit built from the ground up over the past nine months reflects our district's deep commitment to equity, access, and community-centered learning. By removing barriers to after-school support and reimagining how and where the learning can happen, the mobile classroom serves as a rolling extension of our schools. It'll be offering tutoring, academic interventions, enrichment activities, and family engagement opportunities in the various communities that we serve here in Windsor. This initiative is a testament to what is possible when vision meets action and when we center students in everything we do. We are excited for this next chapter. And it was a great opportunity that we were able to bring to fruition through our remaining ESSR funds. Before, they were actually taken away by our state, which is directed by the federal government. So that's how we were able to purchase the school bus and trick it out. I was quoted in one of the news organizations. I felt like it was like a pep my ride show. But I think we did a great job. It's more than I even imagined from Dr. Haiti's presentation. It was just incredible. And I believe the community has just really taken to it and they can't wait to get it rolling. Coming back from BARTS, where I had the stress that we purchased it with ESSR funds. So I was in my head a little bit coming back into the building, getting ready for this board meeting. And I thank God for opportunities to see what's really going on and to bring you right back to center. So Ms. Batchelder, Dr. Haiti and I were walking in the back from our parking areas by the pickleball courts. And a little boy was on his bike and he said, "She's here." So I was like, wow, this kid knows Danielle in Ohio. Wow. But he was talking about the bus. So and I was like, what? It's a she now. It's a she bus. And it was, you know, so that's where it's gonna be parked, just outside the pickleball courts there. And so he immediately cleared my mind and heart. So I get annoyed with the negativity that flows around town sometimes by our school. Y'all know that. I said I'm very defensive of Windsor, have always been. But the kid helped me refocus and re-center immediately before coming back in the building. And so I said, hey, you like the bus? Yes. And like, are you gonna use it? I don't know if I'm gonna get to use it. And we're like, what grade are you in? What school? He said Clover. And he's third grade? Fourth. Because I think, and the doctor, he said, it was from 3 to 5. He says, he was staring at it. So you'll get to use it a few times, a couple of years. And he just smiled and his face was like, that's why we do what we do. Right? And when, you know, I've always told myself in 32 years in this career, when the days are worst, and I'm not talking about just being superintendent, I'm just all 32 years. When the days are worst, I find a kid because they always bring me back to my purpose and what I'm here for. I said to the adults at BARTS, I am, I love kids. I tolerate adults. And I say that unapologetically. So it's about the kids. And like, the boy said, "She's here." Yes, she is. The bus is here, Windsor, and she is beautiful. And I want you guys to truly enjoy her. We learned some nice things for the town that we don't really think about. So I was like, should I report this? Should I not? But yeah, because, you know, Windsor is working as a town doing some great things. And as I said today as well, like, we gotta get past just being excited about being the first town in Connecticut. That's a great thing, but that it really happened a long time ago. So we learned on Wednesday that the town of Windsor, which includes the Board of Ed as well for this, has been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2024 by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, or GFOA. The report was judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting, excuse me, governmental accounting and financial reporting. And its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by our government and its management. So this is important because, you know, we talk a lot about budgets and finances. I know most people really don't understand budgets or money, how it moves through a community or a city, town, or state, or even the federal government. But while a lot of people may do records and make books look the way they want to, I appreciate the fact that I'm in a town where our school district and our town working together. They actually produce financial records that are not just clear, but they're honest. So what you see is what you get. And so that's been noted and I want to make sure that we give credit to that. Also, we launched, out of the Office of Family and Community Partnerships, under the leadership of Dr. Mallory, we launched the Windsor Public Schools' The Plug. Right? And that was interesting to me because I thought about, when I first met my wife, we were going to the Bushnell and for their speaker series and, you know, all the different speakers that I heard. So we have our own speaker series here in Windsor. So this, again, coming out of that office with Dr. Mallory and Ms. Gil. She plays like the host. And we have a student that's on the stage with our guest. So we started off with the Windsor Chamber of Commerce Education to Business Grant. That's how we got to kickoff. And the event, the kickoff event was April 22nd. It was, we recognized Amazon. And we had some of those partners there on stage discussing, you know, career things. And then we had people from the Yard Goats there as well. So I'm looking forward to this speaker series continuing. Students get to come and hear professionals talk again. I like the connection and I believe in the connection of education and the real world. Right? Because we can talk about things. And I know folks, you know, they may love their subjects, but no one cares about your history course or your math class or, you know, gym class. It has to have a connection to something that's relevant to people. So when you have people come in who are actually out there in various career fields telling students, this is why this is important. I actually have to use this now in my job. And so we have students there and I think that's just something great that's come out of that office. Also, another big announcement, because Windsor's just doing things everywhere. On April 24th, 2025, the National School Boards Association, NSBA, announced that our own Leonard Lockhart from Windsor Public Schools' Board of Education, he's our secretary currently, he would be the president-elect for the 2026-2027 school year. He'll be working closely with the current president until he takes office next year. I know Mr. Lockhart takes this work seriously. And you hear his name when I talk to K members and other superintendents around this state in particular. They know Leonard. I'm like, does he go to everybody's board meeting? They know Leonard. He fights fires. The Windsor High School National Honor Society induction ceremony was held Thursday, April 24th. President Fury congratulated the new inductees. Dr. Abdul-Hadi was pleased to announce the three superintendent awards given in honor of three previous superintendents. Daniel Howard Scholar is Samuel Garcia. Dr. Earl S. Russell Scholar is Amanda Inay. And the Paul J. Sorbo Scholar is Mr. Victor Alexander Montilla. Congratulations to over 16 seniors who have signed to play athletics at the college/university level next fall. Those schools include Assumption University, Hofstra University, Nichols College, Southern Connecticut, Central Connecticut, Eastern Connecticut, University of St. Joseph's, Bowling Green, AIC, Riviera University, Hartwick College, Morgan State, and Johnson and Wales Universities. So our students excel academically and athletically. The Windsor High School Class of 2025 commencement will take place on Tuesday, June 10th at the Bushnell Performing Arts Center, beginning at 6:30 p.m. Town Council members will receive additional information regarding graduation and other year-end events via the Windsor High School Principal's office. The last day of school for the students, pre-K to grade 11, will be Monday, June 9th, 2025. And our next regularly scheduled BOE meeting will be Tuesday, June 17th, at 7 o'clock p.m. here in the boardroom. At this time, I will ask Dr. Haiti to give an update on the K3 reading mandate.
I will ask our elementary curriculum supervisor, Ms. Michelle. I mean, director, sorry. Ms. Michelle Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So it's been a great night, all the awards. I love seeing my previous babies getting awards. So yeah, I'm here to do a quick update on our K through 3 reading mandate, in which you know that we spent a couple of years. It's actually started with Dr. Feynman a couple of years ago, but we have definitely decided and selected our programming. And you know that we have decided on Bookworms as the overall reading curriculum. That's the comprehensive reading curriculum. But along with that, the state has put together what we call a compendium. And so there are other pieces to that that we have to select as well or have to use with it. And so we will also be using not only just Bookworms, but GO's curriculum, and that's just a supplemental phonics program. And that uses real-world text, so more like our nonfiction text. Short decodables. It's done in small group instruction. So it's a lot. There's going to be a lot of reading. We, Dr. Haiti, you're like, when are you gonna do math, Michelle? I was like, I don't even know. But anyways, we will be doing math. That's just a joke. Because Bookworms is 135 minutes a day. That's what their requirement is for our upper grades. And that is, let me just say, that's composed of three different blocks. It's our ELA block. It's a shared reading block. And it's what we call a DI block, or differentiated instruction. So shared reading is when they're doing their reading. They're reading a text and they read this text a few days within the week. So they do that repeated reading so that they can get the fluency down, right? So that's the best way for us to teach our students how to read fluently. And then there's the ELA block, and that's when we're doing our phonics. That's when they're learning about words, constructing sentences, responding to their reading. And then there's a differentiated instruction block. And I like to call that like the targeted instruction, right? So that's the time when the teachers are doing small group instruction and they are really focusing on what the students need during that time. As well as, and so students are also working independently during that time and they're doing continuation work from early in the day from their shared reading. They could be working on ELA. They could be working on some independent reading. So that block is a variety of activities that are going on. But it's meant to be made up of three small groups during that time. GO's, again, is part of our phonics programming. And that, again, we're going to be using the decodable texts. And they're going to be working, that's what they'll be using as well for their small group instruction. Again, that focuses on phonics, fluency, comprehension, and vocabulary development. And we have not introduced that this year, but we will be introducing it next year. We are slowly putting this together because I don't want to overwhelm the teachers with four new programs. So that's the second piece. We also have what we call UFLI. You ever heard of UFLI? So it's the University of Florida Literacy Institute. And they also have a foundational program based on phonics. And we have actually been using this program with intervention this school year. And so our grades 3 through 5 school have seen much success with using that in our Tier 2 and Tier 3 intervention programming. So we will continue that because that is actually the recommendation for those grades. And then we're going to incorporate UFLI within the K2 program, again, as part of our intervention. It'll be intertwined with some of our phonics within that Bookworms, but mostly we're going to be looking at it for intervention or small group instruction. I shouldn't say intervention, small group instruction. And then Haggerty, this is again, this is a phonemic awareness program. So this is about what our students are hearing, what letter sounds they are hearing. And we actually, our primary schools have already been using this. And so this is, so they have those components. They have the Haggerty component already, which is exciting. So this is not something new that they have to learn. It's been very popular. I don't want to just say popular. I just think that teachers have embraced having this systematic approach to teaching phonemic awareness. So those are the four different components that our teachers have to incorporate into their reading program. But one thing I'm going to say about all of these programs is that it's going to provide structure for our teachers. And I think it's going to provide that consistency across, not I think, I know it's going to provide that consistency across all of our classrooms, right? So if our students move from Clover Street School to John F. Kennedy School, it's the same program. It's the same style of program. It's the same way. The structure in the classroom will be the same. So you won't have variation. So what I like to say, it's going to reduce the variation amongst the classrooms and amongst the student experiences that they're going to have, right? So our students will experience the same thing within the reading programs. Now, it does, like I said, it does take up a lot of time. And the coaches and I have been working and saying, okay, so what pieces can we kind of combine? That's why we're doing some of this stuff within the small group instruction. And again, some of these are not going to be introduced at every grade. I'm just gonna be upfront, like, not at every grade level, like the G. Like the G O's, we were like, all right, let's, let's start that at grades two and three. Um, and then as the year goes on, we will introduce it to K and one, right? Because where they're still, they have to do the U Fly and Hegarty and all of the Bookworm stuff. So we're going to, right? I know you see your face, you're like, eh. So yeah, so we are slowly going to introduce it. And Bookworms is, it's structured and it's very, it's meaty, right? And it's, there's a lot to it, David. You saw, it's all, there's a lot to Bookworms. And so we don't over, we don't want to overwhelm our students or our children. But I will say our students like the structure. Um, and I've heard very positive things from parents who have students that are in, um, the pilot classrooms. And I'll also say preliminary data shows some really good results. Um, in our I Ready test. And so we're about ninety-nine, ninety-five percent, um, uh, finished with our reading assessment for I Ready. Um, as you know, kindergarten and first grade, they do not take this assessment. However, some of our, um, our, uh, pilot teachers have seen like a sixty percent increase, right? So I will just say, I was like, oh, this, this looking, this looks pretty nice. Um, so like one teacher from, they, she went from nineteen percent of her students being on her above grade level. In fall to sixty-eight percent now. Um, another teacher went from twenty-eight percent to ninety percent. Um, so you know, yeah, yeah. So it's really. We're seeing a huge, like one teacher went from twenty-seven percent to eighty-seven percent. Like we're seeing a huge increase. Um, but there's still work to do. I don't want, I mean, that looks great. And, um, but we still, we're working with, um, the new teacher project as well to help us with our implementation plan. Um, and so we're also going to be looking at just the instructional practices, not just our programming, right? Because you know that with programming, you're going to see a bump, but it's going to plateau, right? And we don't want to plateau. We want to continue with that growth. So we're going to also be working on our instructional strategy. We're going to work on our professional learning, how we're introducing things to our, um, teachers as well. So I think that's it. Any questions? Did you want me to say anything? Oh, I'm sorry. So it is K three. I'm excited about this. So former principal, and so I'm just, I'm excited about this. So, and we are definitely, you know, the reading mandate is for K three. However, we are expanding to four, five as well. So we can have continuity within our elementary schools.
I think that's great, especially for those who've had it in grade three. And enjoying it and knowing it when they go to grade four. That they'll understand the system and what's expected, obviously a higher level, but of, of kinds of readings they'll be doing. But that's great. Mr. Panos, you had a question?
You said to provide structure, similarity, right, with the, um, consistency, but you mentioned several different programs.
I know, didn't I?
And so, well, if there's several different programs, how can you be consistent?
Because they're all teaching the same thing, right? And it's teaching, so, so when I say the consistency, so in our, in our previous program, when we were doing Reader's Workshop. We have our curriculum and the structure, but our teachers were able to choose the, the selection of books that they wanted to use. Um, and they were using the data from their, um, from their teaching, what they taught the days before, the weeks before, to focus on certain areas. Now everybody, the scope and sequence is the same for everybody. Everybody's focusing on the same thing. They're reading the same books. There's no variation in books.
Which there was with the Reader's Workshop?
There was.
Okay, so are we then phasing out Reader's Workshop? Or how does that interact with?
No, we are, uh, Reader's Workshop will be done. I guess that's the easiest way to say, because Bookworms is not Reader's Workshop. It's not. This is a structured reading program.
Bookworms.
We're, we're doing Bookworms.
Getting rid of, okay, Reader's Workshop.
No, Reader's Workshop.
Will be out, okay.
And so again, back to the consistency, right? So they're all going to be doing Hegarty. They're all going to be doing the G O's within their small group instruction. So right, so before for small group instruction, they may have been using different materials. Everybody's using the same materials.
Right.
So that's the consistency. That's one of the consistency. Oh, yeah, I was going to say, please ask the elementary principal, because they love it.
Can you come to the microphone, Mr. Gruber? With Dr. Hill's permission?
It's really a small ad, but the district is looking for programs that teach different components of literacy the best way. So when you're teaching foundational reading, you're teaching phonics, you're teaching comprehension, you're teaching vocabulary, fluency. And the different programs that the team selected teach those different components the best. So that's, that's why they're the different components and programs.
Um, just as a follow-up, you know. Hey, mate.
Want to come up here? Stay here.
I thought I was just doing a little.
Yeah, and this is more, this is, yeah, well, it's both of you, you know. But do we, do we track, like, for example, you have the Reader's Workshop. Now, now, here's, for the reasons you gave, you're moving to this. Do we record, um, for posterity, ten years from now? That why you did this so that, so that ten years from now, uh, you know, they don't make the same mistake?
So to be clear, we're doing this based on the reading mandate as well.
Okay, so it was a state mandate.
This is a state mandate.
All right.
But if you're wondering, are we going to collect data? If that's the question, are we going to collect data to see?
Well, you, you're, you're, what you have now is an improvement over the way you were doing with Work, Reader's Workshop, right? Okay, so I'm just wondering is, if this is something that the district attempts to capture? Or, you know, if you, I mean, after all, you, 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 we're all going to be gone one day. And in ten years, fifteen, you know, if I recall, being in this, being, hanging around these things, these things have a tendency to come back. You know, and in a different form with a different word.
So Mr. Panos, the answer is yes. So for example, um, Dr. Noah has us keeping the student group. That did Bookworms this year together for next year, so we can have that data going forward. I will also say that nothing beats a talented, passionate teacher, whatever the program is.
Okay, but we're talking program here now.
We're tracking the data.
So as Principal Gruber said, the answer is yes, but I'll add the historical perspective. Everything in public education rotates.
That's right.
So none of this is new.
Right.
People get upset because they get excited when I say it's not new. It's, it gets repackaged, it gets new names. It's just coming around a different way and the state mandates it at this point. So who knows if, you know, whatever happens with Department of Education, you get, uh, new State Board of Ed members. Who knows? But right now, this is the mandate. We're always going to collect the data that we have from the programs we're using. But in thirty-two years, there, there is not a new program yet. It just gets a new name.
This kind of reminds me way back in the early nineties, they come up with a thing called whole language. I think it was called.
Language instruction.
Totally. And it was, and it was a movement and they actually, administrators came in, you know. yourselves came in and actually removed the phonics books from the classroom teachers. And, uh, some classroom teachers hid them. It was that, you know, because they couldn't teach, you know? So, and so of course, it wasn't long before this showed up in the results in the standardized test and took a dive. And so they began to, phonemic awareness started coming back in, you know? And so it, it's, so like you say, it, it goes in cycles and, and, you know, we, you know, as a system, long-term. We need to think long-term to make sure that, that years from now, that somebody has a record of, okay, we had something like this. And this is why we did this, so that we can kind of miss, you know, uh, not go back to what was less than. Uh, less than what you have, you think, so.
I guess that's why I just said the caveat of nothing beats a talented, dedicated, skilled teacher for what Mr., um, Dr. Hill said. You know, we can have enhancement with programs, but the key is talented teachers, which we have in Windsor.
Any other question, Ms. Soder?
Oh, yeah, if I could, I want to ask you a terribly loaded question. Um, because I remember when this came through, it's a mandate and I remember it was expensive. And so my question is, pretend it wasn't mandated and forget the cost, right? In your honest assessment, as much as you can be honest in a public forum, because everyone's under pressure to say, yeah, of course, everything's wonderful. But the reality is, if you had to use this new system versus the old system, in your, in an honest opinion, forgetting budget for anyone else's opinion, is this really better? Or is it, or is it not? I'm just curious because we had some concerns, A at the cost, B, it's an unfunded mandate. Uh, third, it came from a state that's already at the bottom. So of course they're going to get better just by people paying attention. But do you think, is it a better system or is it like, well, toss a coin and it really is about teachers? Like, what are your thoughts on that?
Trusting my teacher opinion, which I do, because they are awesomely and amazing dedicated teachers. They do think it's better.
Okay, that's good.
And again, so I'll say, having evaluated many teachers and using in different systems. It, it removes the variation and that, for me, that's a really important piece, right? And it provides structure. The other thing is, teachers are like, just tell me what to do and how to do it, right? And so, yes, we have very talented teachers. I totally agree, but I think this puts everybody on the same plane. I agree.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's very helpful. Yeah, it's a valid, a valid argument too, if I may, because I, I manage a bunch of software engineers and they're a bunch of cats. And but they, that guidance does help. You want a bunch of experts that you can keep on the same page.
That's right.
And that same page comes from a lot. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Yep, yep, yep.
Ms. Soder?
Just a, a hopefully simple question, but so there's a lot of, um, talk in the parent community. Uh, especially for the kids that are kind of like the COVID era kids. Um, is around this podcast and book that came out and around the science of reading. So is this curriculum based on the science of reading methodology? That we're really hearing about making great strides with young readers?
So that's a great question. So all of the programs that the state did recommend are based on the science of reading, right? So, but it's just, all of them are, are. But we've also, as a humanities team, have had additional training on the science of reading. So they have, our coaches have used that training to then pass on to the classroom teachers. So that again goes back to instructional strategies, not just the program, right? So it's more than just the program. It's the teaching that, that, um, Mr. Gruber was saying as well.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Dr. Hill, do you have anything else before we get into the civics in U.S. history?
Nope. I don't, I noticed that I didn't give the board a chance to ask any questions if they had any from my part of the report.
Any questions for Dr. Hill, Mr. Halleck?
Uh, thank you. I just had a couple of questions regarding the, uh, the mobile classroom. Um, I know, uh, um. I'm just kind of, um, you know, what's your plan for like, um, for, uh, staffing the bus? Especially during like our summer months, um, when students are, are in school. I heard you, you read folks. I have Dr. Haiti. Sure.
So are you asking specifically during the summer months?
Um, yes, to start with both.
Yes. Okay, so, um, we're gonna, we're gonna use our, um, our teachers. So we have a lot of teachers who are interested, um, to work over the summer, also our tutors. So we have academic tutors as well, reading and math. So it will be open. Teachers will have the ability to sign up. If they want to work one day, two days, an hour, two hours, it's going to be kind of like on the first, uh, first come, first. First come, first served basis for teachers to sign up, um, as well as students as well. So students will have to sign up.
Is it the same, um, kind of thing during, during the school year? Like, what's your plan?
Mm-hmm. Same thing during the school year. Um, a week in advance, the schedule is going to be, um, published. Uh, teachers will get a chance to sign up and if all the slots are taken, then that's, that's it for the week. They can sign up for the following week.
Okay. Now say you get a few, um. Uh, special education students that are, are using the bus. Are you, are you playing on, um. I'm having a special education?
When parents sign up, when parents sign up, they will be asked to let us know, um, if there are any special, um, needs. That we need to be aware of. Um, also they will let us know what specifically, um, they are looking for in terms of support, enrichment. Or remediation. Um, so we'll have a better idea of who's coming. So teachers are better prepared.
Okay, um, now I'm assuming throughout this process, you're going to collect. A data on those students that are, are using the bus. Um, is that something that should be? Be, be presenting to the board so that we can see if there's progress. As we move forward here?
So, no, we're not going to collect data the way you think. It's, it's more of support, right? It's like, we don't collect data right now when kids are tutored or it, it's extra support. The data should show up in the performance of the students in our schools, wherever they come from. So this is, this is extra support.
Okay, fair enough. Um, now obviously. You know, buses, there's maintenance, you know, things break down. Um, you know, what's the plan for? For paying for those kind of things and for like different costs associated with that, like insurance and things like that for the bus?
Same plan as all our other vehicle that we own as, um, this school district. So it's, it's just going to be added on to our insurance plan, everything else.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. Thank you so much.
And I think just to follow up from Mr. Halleck, he, he didn't come to the coffee chat. He would have heard this, but now hopefully, but hopefully anybody who watches this board meeting down the road. Um, on sleepless nights, you know, go back to the YouTube video. Uh, but one of the things, it was interesting, you mentioned that there's a teacher who's actually not only a school teacher. Uh, but also certified, uh, has his, uh, C D L license, um, and can drive the bus and be the teacher.
Has just found out that we have somebody else as well that is also a teacher and has a license. So people are coming out telling us all kind of things that we didn't know.
We also have several grants that you've already gotten to supplement what we're able to do.
We have sponsors. Um, we have, um, a sponsorship, um, through Niagara Water, ten thousand dollars. In fact, we just got the check cut today. Um, so that will go into a fund where this is where we're gonna use to, um. Pay for all the operation, the operating cost of the bus. The Windsor Health Department has also, um, donated twenty-five hundred dollars, part of a grant that we've written together. Um, to provide health information on our bus. So that, um, we're going to be carrying some health brochures that will pass out to families as they drop off their children.
Mr. Panos?
Yeah, just following up to, um, uh, number one, will you be using the bus, uh, for some reason during school hours?
Yes, so, um, our first initial plan to use it during the school hour is to do, um, some play groups. So currently we have our little, um, preschoolers and students who are not, um, age, school age yet. Um, our F R Cs at all the schools, they do play groups. So their parents bring them once every few weeks. And they do story time, they play, they do different activities. So the plan is to take our mobile bus out in a community, in different communities, um, and start during the school day with play groups. So that's one way we're going to use it during the school day. We might also drive it to different schools and make it kind of like a, um, a reward for classes that earn something. They can do a field trip on the mobile bus. So there's already a lot of different ideas that we have to, um, use it during the school day. As well as after school.
Okay, now is it the intention to have grant fund, uh, all, all its operating costs?
No, I think we, we're, some of the costs, just like, so at the coffee talk, I talked about how in our elementary schools. Um, and even our middle school, we do have funds that we put aside for enrichment, for after-school clubs, for robotics clubs. For different things that kids can stay after school and do. But not all our elementary kids, because we don't run late buses. So a lot of our, our elementary kids that have parents that work and cannot come back and pick them up later. They miss out on a lot of after-school opportunities. So just like we fund our after-school opportunities in school. We're going to use some of that same funding and fund some after-school opportunities in the mobile classroom so that it's out in the community.
Okay.
And also, um, as Dr. Haiti said, I just want to stress for the public, these are great questions. Um, we'll continue to pursue not just grants, but sponsorship opportunities. They have a lot of companies in, in town and, um, I know from my experience in Hartford, uh, with high schooling. Companies love things like this and, you know, all sponsorships help. So you're gonna have big ones, small ones, it doesn't matter. Um, and we'll just make sure they stay directed and, um, primarily focused on supporting. The mobile classroom. Um, and we'll just make sure they stay directed and, um, primarily focused on supporting the mobile classroom. And you could all feel free to donate if you would like to as well.
Oh, um, thank you.
Just in case you were looking for somewhere to write a check.
Can I borrow the bus?
Oh, I'm glad you asked. So, uh, a parent did ask today and we haven't fleshed it out, but I'm always about finding another way to find money. So, uh, like, what if we have an event in our, Windsor has lots of sub-communities? So he asked, you know, could we have the bus come if we were gonna have like something special in our subdivision? I'm like, yeah, so we'll have to work that plan out, because it's gonna cost. But, you know, you want the fun bus to show up, we'll show up. No food on the bus, but we'll show up.
What, what did the, um, uh, what was the total co- the Esser money fund for the, for the bus? Was it quarter of a million?
Quarter of a million.
For the bus or for Esser?
No, no, the, for the bus.
Oh, gosh, no, so, um, we bought the bus for $23,000. And I wanna also mention...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I know, right?
That's not even a car.
I know, that's what...
Yeah, oh, oh.
I also wanna note, because it hasn't been actually advertised, this is actually a wheelchair accessible bus also, which is huge. So, so that was 23,000 and then we, it was $100,000 to have it all outfitted. So all of the construction inside, the wrapping outside, supplies to put in the bus, the whole...
That's, that's a good deal. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Otter?
Very serious question. Would you consider having a, um, a little contest to have the kids name the bus?
Um, so yesterday I was talking about a contest to have the kids name the characters on the bus. Because there are, so if you notice, the characters represent all different population that we have in Windsor. Um, even little Noah is in the back. Um, so we talked about having our elementary students have a competition to name all the characters and our high school music production team to have a competition to come up with a, um, theme song. So that when it pulls up, kind of like the ice cream truck, now it's, the song is connected to like the ice cream truck. We are looking for a song that as soon as kids hear it, yeah. So we're, we're, we're gonna work on these two competitions in high school.
Mr. Mahalco already asked me, he said, "When it comes to Paquonic, we wanna say, 'We welcome you to Paquonic School, we welcome you to Paquonic School.'" Pray to school around. Maybe he'll have to pay for that.
That's not very original.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, um, why don't we start the next one off with a motion, Ms. Taylor?
Thank you. I move the board approve the civics of the, in US history, uh, curriculum, uh, as a first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos. And if we could now have a presentation on these?
So we, um, we usually don't, we present at subcommittee and then we take questions here. So we are ready to take questions.
Okay, um, and just, um, my own two cents, I was very impressed with both, both the civics and American history. Not as, I mean, in the content, but also how it was described and the way it resources and the different choices students will have in both courses for how they may wanna present. They don't necessarily have to do a paper, they may do a podcast or something with video or something. It gives them a lot of different opportunities. So, uh, if you don't wanna do any kind of upfront, I'll start by asking questions that board members may have. Let's start with civics.
Yeah, that's the first one presented, right?
Yep.
Yes.
So, oh, well, yeah.
Mr. Panos?
Well, you're not gonna make the presentation then, uh, we're just gonna assume what?
We never, we never present again, um, it's...
Oh, okay.
The presentation happens at subcommittee and then we just take questions here.
All right, why don't, um, you give us then a little, uh, over how this differs from previous curricula in the way it is presented and it was, and what you, what is expected of the students? And it was, I understand, let, let's say my understanding would be that typically, uh, history, um, the way it was taught was, there was a sort of, uh, a reading assignment and then, then a kind of lecture by the, by the teacher. And then there were various, you know, there, there could be a, a paper, a term paper, or some other thing. Could be what we just mentioned here, but, uh, is this different? Ri- is this radically different, is this, than, than this teacher-led, um, method?
I'm happy to share what I, uh, just for consistency, and then if you continue to have questions, I'll answer those to the best of my ability. Um, just the basic, um, changes to this curriculum, uh, when looking at, comparing it to the previous civics curriculum. I'll start there, I think it was part of your question, right?
Right.
Um, so one of the main differences is we've, we have, uh, sort of revised our curriculum template slightly. So when you look at that curriculum template now, um, compared to previous iterations of this curriculum and other curriculum that we've done, we're using a, a template that we modeled off of, uh, Open Up Resources, which actually happens to be the same vendor who, or the same group that makes Bookworms. It's not a Bookworms curriculum, but the formatting and some of the key, um, elements to this curriculum, such as having a blueprint for teachers to follow, that outlines for them what the main topic of each unit is, what the, the skills and standards are, what, um, what are students going to be able to do by the end of the, uh, of the unit, et cetera. Some of those elements that you'll see in the curriculum map and the curricular units were actually adopted from Open Up Resources, again, which is the same, um, organization. I'll use, they're not really a vendor, but the same organization, um, that designed Bookworms and a number of other curriculas. So we looked at their model of how they actually present, uh, curricula to teachers and we thought this would be a, an advantageous way to sort of take theirs and then make it our own. So there is a new version, um, of our template. So when you see the template, you should, you would notice that if you had them side by side, there are some differences here. Um, I named a few, but there are more. Um, the other main difference with this version of civics is that we tried to model it after the AP, um, Government and Politics course. So Mr. Bennett, Ryan Bennett, who, uh, presented to the subcommittee, is our expert teacher on that course. Um, and he was one of the lead writers of the civics course along with two other members of the staff. Um, the goal there was to make it rigorous and to make sure that it was comprehensive, complex, and in-depth. Um, and it mirrors, it's not to the same level as an AP curriculum, but it mirrors a lot of the same themes, topics, um, even some of the same texts, um, that you would see in that. Finally, I would say that probably the third most noticeable feature of this that would be different from previous curricula that we've created. Um, we are now adding in every unit what we call an authentic application task. So this kind of hits on your second question a little bit. Doesn't really hit on our delivery system, how we instruct, but what it does hit on here is, um, how are students going to show us that they understand the skills that are embedded in the unit? Um, and what we were really aiming for were opportunities that were as sort of real life and authentic as possible. Um, so you'll see some of these, so every unit has an authentic application task. Um, they're usually conducted at the culmination of the unit, but it doesn't, um, always have to be that way. These tasks do typically involve, uh, reading, which the, if you look at the curriculum, it's very, uh, heavy on reading and writing. Um, and speaking and listening, which we would want for a social studies course. But these tasks, again, are, are really supposed to be engaging, but also opportunities for students to show that they, uh, learned the skills. So I'll give, um, I'll give an example, um, the last unit, unit four. Um, one option for the application task is students work with a group to get someone elected to office. So this is a mock, sort of a mock election. Um, students are assigned small groups and choose one person to be the political candidate with the other members of the groups acting as party members and campaign advisors. Um, the candidate of the group will try to convince their constituents to vote for them using arguments and debate and advertising and so on. So the idea here is we take the skills, um, and then we want students to be able to apply those skills or transfer skills into novel contexts, because for us, that really actually shows us if they did acquire the skills or not. If they have trouble transferring those skills into other environments, it can show us that we have more teaching to do. Um, so I think I hopefully touched on most of your questions. You're wondering about the delivery, like how are we teaching the course?
Yeah, uh, we'll take that for example, is that in class? Uh, does it, the A, this authentic application task? It sounds like it could take a fair amount of time, um, is it in-class time that it takes?
Uh, yeah, I've seen, I've seen some of these types of tasks happen in these classes. I, I'm in the classrooms a lot, um, in the two buildings and, yes, the teacher is there sort of coaching and guiding students. Um, and, and prior to the, uh, them doing the task, there's front-loading with the material, right? So, uh, reading assignments, debates they might have in class, writing assignments, discussions. All of the typical things that you would normally see in a humanities class are happening. And then application of skills is done in this way. And yes, so again, and to answer the question, the majority of it is done in class.
Uh, so are there several, in the same class, are there several different groups doing this? Or are they all doing these?
Nope, there can be several groups within the same class.
Is this, um, um, so this is not, uh, you, you mentioned something about level? So I take it this is not what you call high honors level, is this, is this?
Our civics, yeah, our civics course at the high school is un-leveled. It's one of those un-leveled courses. If students do want to take a more accelerated, I'll call it a more accelerated course, they can take AP Government and Politics that would fulfill the civics requirement. Um, but this course, so those are the two choices, uh, in that grade level, 12th grade. Um, this course is a semester long and it is un-leveled.
So it's an un-level for, um, for all through, at college, honors?
No level, there's no level at all, it's un-leveled.
Un, okay, so, uh, and, and it's weighting, let's say, goes as what?
Thank you. Doesn't affect the weight.
Doesn't assess the weight?
As opposed to if, let's say, a student, students who take a college level class versus an honors or high honors class, that will affect the weighting.
I see, so there's no level, is, okay, I see, so it doesn't enter into the, uh, the GPA in any way?
And, and there are, again, there are students who choose to take the AP course. Um, I, I can say just, this is observational. Being in those, in the classrooms, the civics classrooms, and again, I get it, I do go into classrooms quite a bit, um, probably hundreds of times this year at this point. It is a very, um, students are very engaged and it's really nice for me as someone who is in leveled classrooms quite a bit to see students of all, of, who, who maybe some take college classes in other subjects or take AP classes in other subjects in the same space and engaging in the same intellectual, uh, challenges. It's really nice, um, from my perspective to see that.
So, now, this is a requirement by the state, the civics?
Only required social studies course that the state says that students have to take is civics.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Wallaston?
Yes, I know, uh, this concern was shared by some of us, but I just wanted to mention, you know, there was a little bit of interest about seeing maybe a little bit of a deeper dive into the local, uh... municipal governments.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was a question.
We definitely appreciated that feedback and, um, we can absolutely make an effort to do that at our, you know, at the, at the ground level in the building. One thing that we are trying to do is expand our relationship with the Windsor Historical Society, which also can help with some of the local, um, pieces. But teachers are incorporating local government into these courses. Um, I think Mr. Bennett explained it, right, during the, um, during the subcommittee meeting? But we definitely welcomed that, um, input, it was very good input and it will definitely be taken into consideration.
Okay, yeah, that's kind of important since, you know, it seems that, you know, the kids knew more about the UN than they did about local and state, you know, uh, at, at one time. Anyway, you know, we don't do very much, uh, at that.
That's a great suggestion. I, and I, I'm not just saying this to, you know, to, um, to say it, but I was in a, in a civics classroom this year where they were engaging in a, a mock, sort of like Board of Ed, um, uh, meeting. They were looking at policy and, um, trying to make some decisions about, um, how, whether they'd wanna adopt a policy, um, or not. They weren't impersonating any of you, so don't worry about that.
He wasn't some angry man or...
Um, and we, we do, we do have times when, um, the teachers will show students proceedings from, from our board meetings or from things that are happening at the town level, but I think the, the feedback was really welcome.
So they weren't mocking us?
They were not, and they were not, they were not, no one had, no, you know, there wasn't a Mr. Halleck or a Ms. Taylor. It was just, it was very neutral, but they were just, they were practicing, sort of going through the, um, the process of having to, uh, sort of read a policy, decide on the merits of the policy and, and think about, is it gonna serve all students? Or, um, are there any things we'd add to this policy, delete from it? And then, um, there were individual students who had to, they literally went up to a little desk like this and they had to argue, uh, whether they were in favor of the policy or not. And so, um, and students had to, students, students played the audience, actually. Um, and then they were voters, they had to decide. So, um, but I think you have a great point about being more explicit about the local government piece in the course.
Ms. Taylor?
Oh, I was just gonna touch on it, but you, you went even further. Um, we all, that were, the committee, we all were saying how we wanna take it, you know? And I, I love sharing curriculum. We don't meet often, but when we do, um, lots of great things come forward. So, um, I'm excited about this course and would love to just sit in the back and, and kinda just see what it's like. But, um, very excited about, about, um, all the changes and the added.
Anyone else? Mr. Madison?
Two quick, uh, two things, one, one is, "I love America." I'm, I'm, I'm unapologetically patriotic and I'm reading section one and I'm like, "Oh, yeah, it's all good stuff, Federalist 51." And it's cool, this is good stuff. Um, I have a question on section three.
Uh, I just wanna make sure I'm on there, so, unit three?
Unit three. And the students can choose between social movement option and the legal brief and Supreme Court case option. I'm just curious, just at a high level, what's the ratio between those two choices historically? If such, I know this is a new structure, do, do we have that choice historically?
Well, this is brand new, so I wouldn't be able to tell you that until students have actually done...
Yeah, was something like that available before?
Um, we do offer choices, I mean, I think it's, we often off, offer choices. Um, I, I, I wouldn't be able to tell you specifically like how it, how it's split up in terms of, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be curious over time, all right, cool, thank you.
Ms. Otter?
Just a quick, similar to the hydroponics, because this is new and I know that there's been a lot of back and forth about the curriculum in general for this. Um, would be curious if at some point next year, we could just touch base again to say, here's what we're seeing, here's any feedback, just to kinda close the loop?
Sure, I mean, again, it's, you know, Dr. Parker would be the person to go, or Dr. Hill and Dr. Parker to that. But, I mean, you're always welcome and we have, you know, we're board members, parents, I mean, it's, we have, we, we like to show off what we're doing. It's, it's great stuff. Um, we also have, for our data, data talks, teachers are regularly keeping track of student work. Um, they bring it to data talks to discuss, uh, progress and social studies, we're looking specifically at their progress in writing. Um, so my guess would be, um, I would imagine that we will have student work samples readily available. Um, we wouldn't normally share those with board members because the students' names are on them, but I think we could speak to them, um, and get an idea of how, especially those, the authentic tasks, how they're working out, um, especially in the area of the, the writing that they're going to entail. But, yeah, I mean, we're, we're proud of the work that we're doing and we would really love to have people come and visit. It's, um, and the students love it, when, when I go in there, any of us go in there, um, we have great conversations with our students. Um, we're seeing really thoughtful, really thoughtful work in civics in particular. Um, it was great that it was a presidential election year, it brought in a lot of conversation and... in, in classes and it was really authentic to bring that in. I got to see one class doing an entire senate hearing, they were deciding if they were going to vote for cabinet members and different things. So, yeah, I mean, we'd love to have people seeing what we're doing, we'd celebrate it.
Amazing, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. I assume you'll be staying in that seat to talk about US history?
Yes, I'll stay right here.
So, we'll do the same thing?
You can vote, you can vote now.
Mr. Panos, do you also want an overview in a similar way to start it or?
Uh, yes.
Just to, for clarification for the board, my intent is to have one motion to move...
Both.
Both to a second reading and then after we hopefully approve that, between now and June meeting, questions you now have specific, we send to Dr. Hill, we'll probably give them to Dr. Haiti, we probably will pass them up to Dr. Feynman.
Yeah. I'm still looking over my shoulder when people say that.
Too many doctors in the house.
So, I can give a brief overview. The comments I made about the template apply to the US history course as well, so that new template is the one that we used. And by "we," I don't want to take credit for that. We're talking about a, a really dedicated group of teachers over what ended up being two years because the standards were changing and we didn't want to put a new curriculum forth that had the old standards when we knew the standards were changing. So, this was a long project for both of these, but I would say between the two courses, we had at least six staff members, teachers, and then Dr. Martinez, another Dr. Martinez, our humanities supervisor, working on these. My job is sort of oversight and guidance, but they did the writing. But anyway, we really wanted to, the main thing we wanted to do with this one, unlike the other one, was this unit previous, or this curriculum previously had more than 15 units, which was not feasible. Trying to get through 15 units in a year is, is just not possible. One of the main reasons it's not possible, it's just not, it's not just about the sheer number of units, it's the transitions between them. So, when you move from to unit one, from unit one to two, there's time in there where there's, there might be re-teaching, there might be assessing, there might be workdays where students need to get work done that they still need to give us for unit one. Then, then you're, now you're moving from two to three, same thing. There are these, there are these times in between these transitions. When you're talking about that among 15 units, it is an incredible amount of time and it just doesn't work. It just, and, and teachers weren't getting to the end of the curriculum. So, we've gone from 15 to eight and the teachers who worked on it recommended that as the ideal number of units. So, that was the major thing that we did and we didn't take away content, we synthesized content and what you'll see is that we used overarching themes, which is really, it still follows, it does follow a timeline, but, but there are overarching themes for every unit, such as unit one is called rebuilding America and this is the, the reconstruction period and it's also about westward expansion. So, so things got blended a little bit and we also had, we, we had to really make sure that the course was, again, as rigorous as we really wanted it to be and more in-depth because when you cover 15 different units, the depth is not as much because you're breezing through, you've got to make it through 15 units in what ends up not actually being 90 blocks because it's more like, ends up being like 75 blocks because we have snow days, we have vacations, we have illnesses, we have graduate, you know, graduation rehearsal, you have a million different things, field trips. So, we're talking about 75, usually 75 blocks to get through 15 units and the depth just cannot, it just can't go in as, as deep as we need. Those were the main changes with this one in addition to, and the application tasks you'll see in this again, so those, that we wanted students to authentically apply their skills. There also are, there's a reading list with this, with not only the board, but families and students would really appreciate having a substantial, there's a reading list linked into this that is more substantial than what we've had in the past. So, those are, I would say those are the main, main changes with this one.
Okay. Well, I mean, I have a, I did have a specific question.
Yeah.
If I'm, I'm sorry.
If you can just give, if you're referring to a unit, it just helps me to...
I don't know, maybe this is more for the questions to send in. I was just, you know, I observed on, that, you know, it, it says something like overall in this, like, it says, "The US and Soviet emerged, Soviet Union emerged from World War II as global superpowers entering into an ideological Cold War defined by military buildup, political alliances, and foreign interventions aimed at containing communism." Now, what I would expect is somewhere there that would give an explanation is how the Soviet Union ended up as a superpower and challenged to the US, given, given what they were before the war and how they were, you know, how they ended up, you know, in, in charge of, you know, Eastern Europe, how it was they affected China, they, they, they took over, Mao Zedong took over in, in China as opposed to Chiang Kai-shek and how North Korea or Korea, and then finally, North Korea ended up under Soviet domination. So, you know, how did that all of a sudden happen and how did the, you know, how did they explain, you know, it just seemed brushed aside by simply making an overall statement here and, and then it rushes on to talk about Cold War fears and censorship and discrimination and all that sort of thing in the next part. But, you know, obviously, this is just a curriculum map, you know, but I would expect that there would be some explanation as to how the Soviet Union and Chiang Kai-shek and all these guys got in, so.
So, two things, I don't know if this will be helpful or not, but when you go into the units themselves, so I'm, are you talking about unit five? Are you in unit five?
I, that, I think that was...
Probably topic World War II, Cold War, the...
Yeah.
Right. So, in the unit itself, so not the map, but the actual long form, which is the unit five, went, and this would be for anyone, anyone at home if, who has access, and then all of you on the board, when you go to the section in the curriculum called Unit at a Glance, which for this unit is on page eight, begins on page eight, what that's going to do is take you through not lesson plans, but the lessons that we would want teachers to teach within this unit and it goes by, it'll, it'll go through a progression of learning targets. So, if you look here, it can give you a little bit of a better picture than the map as to what the topics for individual lessons might look like within the unit. But what it's not going to give is every single detail that would come out of like teacher instruction, readings, and so on. It's a little broader because we still leave room for teachers to teach. But if you want a little more insight into how the progression of lessons, like how it go, what you're, like how it goes from point A to point B, you can look at the unit at a glance. And if you still have a question about it, we'd be happy to provide more detailed response to that for the second reading if you'd like.
Okay. It is a little difficult to work with Board Book to get all these things, I, I find it.
Yeah, I don't have any involvement in Board Book, but...
Yeah, so, you know, but anyway, all right, I'll look at it and send questions in.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you have every item that's going to be taught by a teacher in here. It's, it's giving us the gist of different sections.
Yeah, I mean, curriculum just, I, I tried to preface our work with the subcommittee this way and just not a bad starting point for any of us when we're talking about curriculum. I mean, curriculum really serves three purposes. The first purpose is, is that it, it provides a, a course of study, so logical progression. How do we get from point A to point B? How do we get from unit one to unit eight? Or within a unit, how do we get from, you know, topic one through topic five or whatever? We want however many topics, right? So, I think that's what you're referring to here. It, it also, it also provides us hopefully with ways that teachers can provide access to the same material to all students who take the class regardless of who the teacher is. So, if you and I both teach US history, we're following the curriculum, your students and my students, we get a similar experience, they'd have similar access to what is in the curriculum. And then it also creates a learning experience for students. What is, what is that learning environment going to be like? What it doesn't have, curriculum doesn't have every single detail. As we get into particular teacher lesson plans, which teachers have autonomy over, that's where we get into those kinds of nuances of what is going to happen with all the topics and subtopics, but we wouldn't necessarily see all of that in a curriculum. It's, it's not typical to see that in a curriculum.
Right. I, I was, I was just saying, but, you know, there are things that are specific here, you know, like the next item was domestically, Cold War fears led to Red Scare policies, censorship, and discrimination, particularly targeted suspected communists, LGBTQ, individual, I mean, there's a lot of detail here in this, but there's no, there's, there's nothing given as to what is involved here. There's a lot, there's a lot here in these general things to, to explain and so I would hope there'd be some indication in, in the unit that you're mentioning.
Okay, well, we can, you know, if you have those questions, happy to answer them in detail. You know, the other thing is, it's not going to really directly answer your question, but because our teachers are certified in these subjects, we do assume that they will have, that's why they get the certification, that they will be providing the appropriate instruction and the appropriate details within these topics to our students, which is why we don't include every single thing in here. But again, if you have a specific question, we're happy to answer it.
Sorry, it, it says that, you know, other people might have a different wording for the exact same description of what happened after the war than what is here.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Madison and then Mr. Wallaston?
Can I ask for a extremely minor point?
Sure.
But I think it'll help a lot. I understand what Paul's talking about and he and I are very philosophically aligned. I am a flaming compromiser and one could argue that Paul's pretty adamant about his position. But can we just put Red Scare in quotes, just like we have Great Society in quotes, we have Global Police Force in quotes, we have American Dream in quotes? I noticed that. I understand what Paul's saying, right? On the conservative side, there's an argument to be said that I will concede as a person on the conservative side, that, that, that the government overreach in the, the witch hunting is, is a concern. There's also the concern of the inverse, which is the stealing of American secrets and, and the spying and all that stuff. If we could just put Red Scare in quotes, I think it would maybe help, I'm not sure, Paul, I can't read your mind, I'm just throwing this out here. It indicates that...
That's a minor aspect.
Eh, but it would help. I understand what, what Paul's saying and since we do have several other things in quotes, we could argue whether the Great Society, right? I have a political opinion on that on the right, you have one on the left, I respect that. But the idea of Global Police Force, you know, I'm a veteran and I'm pro-America all the way, right? So, I may be a little bit more strong about that. But I, I'd like that in three other places, we put something that you could argue about in quotes. I'm just wondering, since Paul has brought this up several times, if that would help, Red Scare, knowing that one could argue a different case, just putting that out there in case it helps for a balance point.
I'm happy to bring that back to the team.
Okay, thank you. It would help me.
Would it help Paul?
I don't know.
Might help me, a little tiny bit.
A tiny bit?
Not really.
Mr. Wallaston? Thank you very much and thank you for the committee that worked on this. As you had indicated, this was a long time in coming and a lot of work by great teachers in the district, so thank you.
Yeah, I'll let them know too.
At this point, as I mentioned before, we're going to take a vote, was, motion was made by Ms. Taylor and seconded by Mr. Panos and the motion was to approve as a first reading. We're not waiving any second reading. We hope to in June have a second reading and the opportunity is, and I would say, not only to Mr. Panos, but anyone else, of going back and looking at this and the sooner, the better, so they can digest the questions and they may have answers that you may have additional questions for. So, the earlier you get those questions in, the better off we'll have a good discussion in June on, on the final vote of this. So, motion is to approve first reading for civics in US history. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention, motion carries eight zero zero. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. I don't know, Mr. Wallaston, if you want to say a little bit about an upcoming committee report?
Yes.
It's listed under 10A, but...
The Policy Committee plans to meet on the 28th of this month. I'll see you guys then.
Okay. I know Ms. Zoder is the new Chair of Long Range Planning and I know she's trying to find some, she'll be trying to find some dates for us to try to do a kickoff meeting before the end of the year. I don't know if you want to say anymore about...
Me and, me and Leonard and Jeremy, we're gonna huddle after this. But, you know, top of, top of mind is trying to figure out our school facilities and what the plan is for the future is going to be the main topic.
Anything else on curriculum, Ms. Taylor?
No, I think we really rigged that one over the cold, didn't we? All right, thank you.
Other matters, announcements, regular board meeting, BOP Policy Committee, as Mr. Wallaston has stated, virtual committee Wednesday, May 28th. Next regular board meeting Tuesday, June 17th at seven o'clock here in the LPW boardroom. Any other announcements before we ask for audience to visitor? Ms. Zoder, any, anything for the good of the, anything coming up or things you want to mention?
I'm sorry, I did, I did want to mention because I forgot to mention when I was talking about JFK, that we do have our spring concert coming up this Thursday, it'll be at Sage Park.
Sage Park, okay, great. Mr. Madison?
Yeah, I just want to say that the, the single best moment I've had on the Board of Ed occurred tonight when we reviewed that, what they're doing with the hydroponics. And I'll tell you why. I'm a big believer in positive reinforcement and I love that we're finding stuff and bringing it out, but when I use phrases like save the planet, like, and change the world, I'm not being metaphorical, I mean literally, right? Because if you're going to change the world, I'm sorry, I'm a nationalist, it's going to start with America, we're the, we're the, are the cultural, military, economic force in the world. It's going to happen in a state like Connecticut because we rock, not criticizing their states, but let's face it. If it's going to happen in Connecticut, it might as well happen in Windsor. I mean, I mean it literally. And so, when I say those things, I'm, I'm really saying those in the most literal sense. And when I look at something like was presented tonight, I had, I hold 13 patents, US patents, right? That's my proudest achievement in my career. And that means the US Patent Office looked at my inventions and said, wow, this is unique, we're going to give you a patent on that 13 times. When I look at things, I can tell when they're inventive and unique, if I may say so, given my credentials. That's unique, that's inventive, it has that multidisciplinary view, I love that. If we can keep bringing those kind of things up and finding ways to permeate that through all the things that we do, I think it'd be fantastic, so, love it.
Thank you. Mr. Wallaston? Mr. Halleck?
No announcements from me. Mr. Lockhart? Windsor, we had a great week and let's continue the good vibes without any negative feedback. If it's going to be constructive, that's one thing, but the negativity, we can't allow it to weigh down our district. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
So, the next time we meet, my baby's going to be already graduated and so will my, that baby too, that's my niece. So, shout out to the class of 2025. I've mentioned this to Dr. Hill and, and team at the, at the high school a couple weeks ago, that class of 2025, this is a fun fact, I don't know if people knew this, but class of 2025 in Windsor, these are the kids that had full-day kindergarten for the first time. Full-day kindergarten, see, you were there, Fang was, Miss Fang, Julie, you were there? Yep. Yeah, so, yeah, I know, right? That's, that, that is important to, to call out because these, there's something, not just special about this group, but the ones that came all the way straight through, they, they, they went through a lot, class of 2025, you know, they didn't get to, to go to Cape Cod, they didn't get to go to eighth grade, DC trip, so, and then they had to start high school with, they left middle school in Mask and, and start high school in Mask, so I just want to shout out the fact that, if you're wondering like why they're such rock stars, because they had to go through a lot to get it. So, shout out to the class of 2025. I am a little biased, I love all the babies. Your kids had to do that. So, anyway, I'm just saying that it, it's important and it's pertinent to call it out, that these are the kids that went through, that they were allowed to go full-day kindergarten. Shout out to the board that, you know, and the town that, that pushed that through. And it also is a shout out to the fact that when we invest in our kids, amazing things happen. So, shout out to the class of 2025. I'm very proud of you all and I can't wait to see what you do next. And I forgot to mention, girls lacrosse senior night is Friday evening. And I forgot to mention, girls' lacrosse senior night is Friday evening.
Very good. Mr. Panos?
Just looking forward to the graduation day, and I, I'd rather not comment on comments about negativity, and then, all of a sudden, these negativity comments come up here. So, I'm not a, I'm not a Facebook guy, so I, I don't know, maybe there's something you see I don't, but I'm sorry. Thank you.
Very good. Anybody, we'll do audience to visitors, but looking at the crowd, is there anybody who wants to address the board? Anybody, anybody with a hand raised? I think Mr. Fulton wants to come here. I'll wait for the, our athletic director to come, no, to come to the podium, no. Anybody with a hand raised? Okay, so, I'm looking for one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, looking for a second, seconded by Mr. Panos.
Reluctantly.
Any discussion, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention, motion...